We want to call this Lorraine City School Board Meeting to order. Can I get a roll call? Mr. Treger.
Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Mr. Demakian.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Surtel.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to thank you all for taking time out of this beautiful Saturday morning, knowing that it's probably going to be raining on us tomorrow morning, so that's going to mess up somebody's tea time, I'm sure. But this is a vision that we've had, to bring all these districts together that are in this ADC, this Academic Distress, and a time for us to really start working closer and closer together. And you guys are going to see the people from Youngstown is running a little late. They had a traffic jam up on the turnpike, so when they come in, understand that's what happened with them. But we also have East Cleveland here, and I wanted to introduce Dr. Keenan and welcome you for being here, and let you introduce whomever you may have brought with you.
Thank you so much. I'm Uni-Keenan, President of the East Cleveland School Board for the past 12 years. This is my Vice President. I'm sorry. My Board Member, Dr. Mary Rice. We have with us, from our community, Dr. Paul Hill, this Juanita Gotti, and Dr. Benavate Brooks. They are interested in certainly what we need in our community. So we want to thank you for coming. We want to thank Dr. Sanders for putting this together for all of us, so that we can learn from you and you can learn from us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we do have a member from Youngstown. If you'd like to introduce yourself and say hello.
Good morning. My name is Jackie Adair, Board Member at Youngstown City Schools for six years. My President and another Board Member are, as you heard, running late, and I will allow her to make comments when she gets here.
Thank you. Thank you. And so we can keep this going, we were blessed today to have three of our legislators approve that they would come from Columbus and say that they would show up because they were very interested in hearing what this group had to say and bringing us up to speed on what's going on in Columbus. And as they put it to me, this is a really big deal. They're not sure what took so long for it to happen, but everybody in Columbus has their eye right now on what's happening with these three districts. So I know Mr. Nathan Manning is here, and we do have Mr. Joe Miller here, and I'm going to give each of them just four or five minutes to come to the micro-- three minutes to come to the microphone. And just say hello, give us a quick update from there. Come on, Nathan, you can come first, Senator.
Yes, I go first.
Yes, sir. Come on up. And Teresa should be here very shortly. Yes, please. Yes, sir.
Well, thank you. I didn't prepare a four or five-minute speech. It's only a 30-minute speech, so bear with me.
That's all we want.
Just kidding. Bad joke for this early in the morning on a Saturday, but I'm Nathan Manning, State Senator for 13th District, which covers all here in County and all Lorraine County, so obviously Lorraine City Schools. You know, unfortunately, House Bill 70 passed while I was in the legislature. I did vote against it, thankfully, and we're kind of seeing why a lot of us were not supportive of House Bill 70 at the beginning. Unfortunately, with Youngstown, East Cleveland, and Lorraine Schools, it's clearly not working, and that's what we're hearing a ton in Columbus. We're hearing all the right things. I would think Representative Miller will say the same thing on both sides of the aisle. Excuse me. So I, you know, I think, what is it, three bills out there?
Three above the line, probably.
Yeah.
Not the black line, but above the water and a couple that are staring below.
Yeah, so there's two definite bills out there in the House. There's one in the Senate. I'm carrying House Bill, or Senate Bill 110. It's had three hearings. There's no opposition yet. It's going very well. I'm very optimistic that we'll get something done in the budget. What that is, I'm not really sure yet, but, you know, there's a lot of people at the table, thankfully, unlike how House Bill 70 was done, so I do think we'll get something done. My fear is for the, you know, Lorraine, East Cleveland, and Youngstown school districts, because I'm very confident we'll get something done for those future school districts, but we can't forget these three school districts. I know Representative Miller and Senator Fetter and I and others are going to make sure of that. So hopefully, we will get something done sooner rather than later, and happy to take any questions after Representative Miller has an opportunity.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sorry. Don't think that wants to get up there. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Well, thank you for coming. Thank you for inviting me. President Ballard and all the distinguished guests here that care about what goes on in schools, cares about what goes on in these three particular schools that are under assault, under siege, we get it. We see it. We live it. And I'm down there trying to do something about it. Nate's down there trying to do something about it. And to be honest with you, I think there's a lot more than we are willing to recognize because they're doing things either, like I said, below the water, above the water, but there's a lot of waves being made. What I can say is Senator Manning, there's, we, when I came down there, and like I said, he's a veteran. He's the veteran. And what I've come down to learn really quick is we have policy and we have politics. And unfortunately, and it's maybe because I'm either naive or just idealistic, that you take care of good policy and you worry about the politics on the outside of that. Unfortunately, sometimes it becomes politics first, and then we'll figure out where the policy falls. We saw how that happened. When people have political agendas, you get what you get, and the takeover of House Bill 70, which really was supposed to be a quality piece of legislation that a lot of legislators got behind. They hijacked it. We know it was done in one day. The thing I hear is, I think we need to wait. I think we really need to take our time through this and work our way through, and I'm thinking, you all sat there and voted yes, except for Nate and a couple others, and I appreciate that vote, Senator Manning. And you voted for that. You knew that that 10-page document that became 77 was going to wreak some havoc, and you did it for politics. You didn't do it for policy. That's a problem. I'm going to fight for policy first, and I'm going to try to learn the politics on the backside of it. And Superintendent Graham and I were having a discussion, and I think I opened his eyes to just how naive I am about the politics side. He's kind of looking at me going, "There's a lot of politics down there that you're going to wade into." And I will, but I'm going to wade into it with the focus on good policy. And good policy for Youngstown, good policy for East Cleveland, good policy for Lorraine, but that's not it. We have 610-plus, 611 school districts that deserve better. Deserve not just a stop, all right, not just a removal, but an overall opportunity where these superintendents and boards can work together with some outside expertise and come together and provide these kids with that excellent educational opportunity. We need to take that train off the track that's going over the cliff. Three of them already in the ravine and a mess. All right, we need to pull those back out. We need to get the train back on the right track, and we need that train to be packed. We need the cars to be added based on the community itself. That's what our Bill 154 is supposed to do. I believe that there is still, even though we're pretty excited, we have five different entities plus more on this Bill 154, we still think that there's some stuff that can be done to that bill to make it even better. And there's only so many hours in the day, there's only so many days in the week. I promise you, I want to meet with every one of you. I want to meet with East Cleveland. I want to meet with Youngstown. Actually, I'll be in Youngstown on Monday. And I want to continue those conversations. And every time I've continued conversations with people that are invested and that care, better legislation comes out. But we cannot wait any longer. We have to pull these schools out. We have to get rid of HB 70's bad policy. Thank you. Once we do that, once we do that, these schools will be in the right direction. I believe that the people up here, the people out in the audience here that are a part of these three schools, love that school, care about that school, and want to see these kids thrive and survive. And I keep hearing this word, stick. I'm tired of it. You know, these kids grow up with sticks all their lives, all their lives. They grow up with sticks. Let's give them some carrots. Let's give them some help. Let's give them some support, and let's get them an opportunity to the American dream. And if we don't fix the education system, we've stymied that in the earliest time of their life.
Yes.
So I'm here to support your efforts. Please let me know what I can do. Senator Manning's probably got a bunch of good ideas as well. He's been around. I know his mom's got a lot of experience. I'm hoping that she's going to reach out as well in our committee when our bill continues on this side, and somewhere together, whether through the budget, which probably is going to be more than likely the way it goes. But the good thing about, and what I appreciate about Senator Manning's and appreciate about the different bills in our House, and, by the way, I appreciate what the ground movement has caused. Those things have caused the discussion to happen. And if discussion doesn't happen, people will just turn a blind eye. We've stopped doing that. Columbus is awake. The Governor doesn't want this stain on his shirt now. He's ready for a fix. He's left a placeholder in the budget. It's probably where it'll get done, but we've had three really good conversations in the Senate because of Senator Manning's bill, and because of the two bills in our House, we have even conversation happening there. That's the key. Get people talking. Get people understanding. Get the testimony out there of how much hurt and pain and turmoil this new bill has caused, and let's get the fix in. All right, and the fix was put in by Kasich. We're going to get the fix in for the kids, not the politics, not the Governor, but for the kids. That's our focus. That's who we started. Thank you. Speaking of our esteemed Senator.
And as she's coming in, Senator Fetter, you're next on the mic.
I have a question. Actually, two. Which one of your bills excludes Youngstown and Lorraine and East Cleveland?
Okay, we have two bills, 127 and 154. 127 is the bill put out last GA because with the Governor there, there's probably, that's the only thing they hoped they could get was a moratorium. 127's a moratorium. We have movement now, and honestly, it started at the grassroots. It's the push by Youngstown. It's the push by Lorraine. It's the push by East Cleveland, community members that have gotten this to move past the moratorium. So 127's moratorium, they just amended it to be a repeal because that's what our Bill 154 does, and I think that that's where the momentum's going. However, our Bill 154 takes it a step further. Listen, I'm not, I don't know how much you're paying attention to England, but I'm not into this whole Brexit idea. You know what? We just want out. We don't know what that means. We don't know where we're going to go. We just want out. That's not fair. Because if you look at what's going on in England, all right, they don't know what they're going to do now. They're all scrambling. Their businesses are scrambled. Their economy's scrambled. They're like, "What do we do now?" Okay, we're out. Time's up. And that, we can't do that to children. Businesses will recover. The economy will bounce back. These kids have one shot at this.
True.
One shot. And I believe that if we just keep pushing 154 out there, I don't care if it turns around and becomes the YLE bill, Youngstown, Lorraine, East Cleveland. It doesn't matter to me what you call it. Just make it right. Once again, good policy will figure out the politics. I'm not worried about the politics. I'm worried about the policy right now. That's what the mandate was for me to come down here. That's what I promised Lorraine and my constituents I do. That's why I'm here. So thank you, and is that answer--
One more. Yes, it does. One more.
Sure.
And do any of the bills presented restore our districts to their prior financial condition?
Now, we're bringing money into it.
Yeah.
Well, that is, we have a couple things going on.
I think we're going to cover some of those questions, though.
Yeah, we have initiative.
Oh, you are.
I think we're going to cover some of those in the next, though. We'll let Senator Teresa come up, Senator Fetter, and then we'll come back to the Q&amp;A and ask her all those questions, if that's okay.
President Ballard, I'm going to give you that Life Preserv you just threw me.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Superintendent. I see so many friendly faces here that I've had relationships with for, well, 19 years. I came from Toledo Public Schools, 18 years in the classroom. This is my 19th year in the legislature, and I left my babies in the classroom to help them have an opportunity in this country through education. An opportunity is the word I believe we need to focus on today and focus on as we move out of the situation we're in. So I'm going to pose some questions, kind of challenge us. We don't want to be all over the place because chaos never gets us anywhere. So being focused and listening to these school board members, and thank you for your dedication and commitment to our democratic process of local control and the local community having their voice heard and organized in operating for that opportunity. So if House Bill 70 is the vision, let me say that again, if House Bill 70 is the vision for fixing education in Ohio, it's time to go back to the drawing board, or for me, the chalkboard.
Yes.
This design is a complete failure.
Yes.
And disastrous for whole communities. We have three whole communities represented here, and if we were to add up those numbers, it would be in the hundreds of thousands of people that are impacted by that failed policy, including the businesses who don't like what's going on with the vision of House Bill 70. That that is our education fix, because as legislators, and my service in the State House, has always been the focus of education reform, to modernize our education system, to meet the needs of our community and the technology that we have today, and we must be focused on preparing our children to meet those challenges. So it's shameful, and it must be ended. And I'm hoping that today is the beginning of the solution, because my colleagues in the Senate do not have the solutions. You have the solutions, because you're close to it. You're close to it. You're trying to make that opportunity work for those children in this state and in this country, and I truly believe this scheme was cooked up as a political stunt for then-Governor Kasich looking to run for President.
Yes.
We saw how all that turned out. He failed. His education reform plan failed. It's now time for our state leaders to admit this was the wrong move within 24 hours in that one hearing.
Yes.
It's failing our children, failing our communities, and our great state. The proof is in the question, which reveals a very disingenuous motive. And here's the question that I pose every single time that I'm on the Education Committee in the Senate, which is recorded, by the way, thank God. Took them 30 years to do that. But, and some of you have asked, I've asked this question. Is there a clear understanding on the exit strategy for Lorraine, Youngstown, East Cleveland under the state takeover to move you out of state receivership? Does anybody have a clear vision on step by step by step on how we are going to get back our schools, get back to the state school board, who was elected in a democratic process? If not, if there is not a clear exit strategy to get out of state receivership, this is a complete ruse. Complete ruse. And it must end now and today in this room.
Yes.
Now, I'm a state legislator, worked on education for 19 years. I was a classroom teacher for 19 years. I'm a veteran as well, so I take my job very seriously. Imagine 10 more urban communities between 2020 and 2022 suffering the same chaos.
Yes.
That is the vision that the state legislators and the Governor need to see. You shouldn't have to stand here and convince everybody on why this is such a bad idea, because they can't answer that question. They want us to waste our time, to get into the weeds, to convince them that this was a really bad idea. Do you see I'm kind of angry about it? Because I know what House Bill 70 was originally, and I know what happened within 24 hours of the concurrence vote back to the House. It turned into something I never recognized and something that I saw as a political platform for running for President. Now, change, and real change, begins with cooperation, collaboration, and funding that needs to be there and exist for you to move out of that receivership. And there needs to be a real value of trustworthiness. Does anybody feel that this system and this reform is trustworthy?
No.
No. You can't get straight answers. You can't get public records requests on how to follow the money. Where is the money? Where are those pennies? Lay them on the table. That is your charge. So CEO Hardy has failed in all these areas. Thus, I believe he needs to resign.
Yes.
And the members of these boards who are not locally connected and living in your community should resign and clean house. If we don't accomplish this, and there are three different tracks that I see that are happening right now, I'm just watching. I'm watching to see how Joe's bill is going to have solutions. I'm going to see how the receivership is going to be pointed out exactly for those school districts that are suffering and in chaos right now, and for the 10 others who are worried that this next report card is going to put them in the same situation that you are. So we have a lot of work to do. We all know why it's a bad idea. We should stop complaining about it and identifying it, and let's follow that money, because there is scandal, I guarantee you. There is scandal.
Yes.
And believe me, Republicans don't want another E-cut on their hands. And I've been there 19 years, and I know exactly how to sniff all that out. And I've gotten a lot of resignations in my career, and this stinks to high heaven. So I'm here to listen. We've got some really great people here, great Americans, who care about their children. And I don't care what color you are, purple, green, orange. If you're an American, you live in this country, you get the same opportunity that I had, which is why I left my classroom, because those little nine-year-olds didn't have the same opportunity I had growing up. And this state forced me out of that classroom because I didn't see the right education reform. And here we are today with the worst thing I've ever seen in my career and lifetime, which spans over 30 years. Superintendent, you know what I'm talking about. It's time to get down to the real business of modernizing education, supporting that classroom teacher. Get those resources in that classroom.
Yes.
They want to do their job. They're not in debt for $60,000 to get through college, or whatever the average is, to be a bad teacher. It's our job to help them be the best teacher in their heart that they want to be. So I'm here to listen, here for the duration. I want to thank all of the school board members who've been communicating with me. I've got notebooks that are very thick, don't I, Chelsea? My staff and the Senate Caucus staff, Kelly, is here, and she helps direct us, and we are taking very good notes. And I can't tell you how much I respect Representative Manning. Thank you for taking this on, because he has always been in your corner. He has always been there to try to make sense of this. And if we can take our political hats off, which we must do, because children don't see R and D, Republican and Democrat, they see, first of all, love. They respond to love. And if they feel that love, guess what? They will turn somersaults in the air for you. And they will learn, and they will carry on the heritage of this great country, and that is through opportunity. And the only way that I've ever seen it is through public education. Public education. Let's say it.
Public education.
You're not loud enough.
Public education.
Yes, let's save it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So briefly, the President down in Youngstown has just arrived and wanted her to be able to greet us and introduce who she has here with her. Brenda?
Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time. I'm still trying to catch my breath. I did leave Youngstown on time, but the turnpike said no. So I just want to thank Mark for bringing this together for us today, and thank Dr. Sanders for hosting this thing for us. The hosting is not the word, but I'm tired, but I really am. I have another member with me there parking. I just wanted to say, and I just need to say today, that I appreciate everyone who I see in the crowd. This means a lot to us down this aisle. This is not the first time that we've come together as a team, but this time has a lot of meaning to it, because now we have bills to look forward to, to try to push through to save our children. We've actually been together about three community meetings. These people have traveled to Youngstown. Michelle Elba from Warrensville, I thank her so much because she came by herself on several occasions. Dr. Rice. And these people were not in academic distress at that time, not with us, but they stood for us and Lorraine. And so I just want to thank them, the Community Leaders Coalition on Education, Bill Phyllis, that's Education Partners Group, the union leaders that came together. We've also met a couple of times up in Columbus as a team fighting this, and then Upper Arlington had a meeting. So we've worked to get here, and we want to thank all those who helped us to this point because we needed your help, but now we need it even more to be able to push this bill out of the way. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And lastly, because we've got lots of dignitaries here, so I don't want to start calling names because I will start forgetting names, but we have two members of our local ADC here. And I did want to point out that Steve Coughlin and Diane Alexander are here. If you guys don't mind, take a stand. They actually work very, very close with our community and with our boards because they know some of the ills that we're dealing with with this House Bill 70. So really quick, guys, I'm going to need a motion to relax the rules for today.
A motion that's been approved.
Motion and supported. Roll call?
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Demakian?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And with that, I am going to bring up my facilitator, my friend, the guy, mentor, godfather, all those things, that the wisdom that this man has and the ability that he has. Now, we've got a really, really good relationship, and he's known very well throughout the district. We're going to bring up Dr. Sanders and say again publicly, thank you for all of your support and your help. Thank you, sir. We call him Doc, guys. We call him Doc.
I'm going to make you an offer you cannot refuse. President Ballard, Dr. Keenan, President Keenan, and our distinguished guests from Youngstown.
President Brenda. We are so officiated about the opportunity to dialogue with you today, and we look forward to, we look forward to our conversation. At your table, there is an agenda, and we knew that getting board members and elected officials together and staying on schedule was going to be quite a challenge for us today, but one of my tasks is to keep us on schedule as best we can, because we put together a lot of important sessions for you. They are designed to be interactive, so we want you to ask questions. Each of our presenters will afford time, and their presentations are open dialogue. One of our Youngstown board members had a question about the current legislative options on the table. Our next speaker will be going over that in great detail. Our next speaker will be going over that in great detail. He has a handout for you as well, so you'll be able to follow along and take notes and engage, and that's our process throughout today. Couple of goals for today, essentially, is to be able to bring our three ADC ethically districts together for dialogue, discussion, and feedback. We wanna have a robust conversation today, and I would thank my elementary teacher from the days that I had the pleasure of serving as the superintendent in Torito. I can assure you that Senator Fetter is a fabulous, was a fabulous teacher, and she's still teaching today. We appreciate that, it's always good to see you. And so today, we want to ensure that you are informed and updated, and we want you to lead today, we want you to lead today with some action steps and some action plans for what we wanna do next, not just get together, have a good conversation, but to be able to actually lead today with some next steps in our local districts. I'm also representing today the Ohio Midsize Urban Districts Leadership Collaborative. This is a new organization of about 20 districts around the state of Ohio, ranks from about 1,000 students to 5,000 students. And the superintendents and teacher union leaders of those districts are working together to identify academic initiatives and other work that we're doing, legislative and alike, to work together to build up school districts in Ohio and to specifically avoid the designation of anything related to ADC. You'll hear from those individuals a little bit later today as well. We also have a survey that we're gonna ask you to complete, a very short survey at the end of our day, and then at the end of the day, we'll be trying to wrap it up and talk about next steps. And our legislators, our parents, our community members will all have an opportunity to have dialogue and questions, and get a lot of feedback, and so we're very excited, very, very, very excited about today. So does everyone have an agenda?
Yes.
All right? And my, two of my staff members are here, so they're gonna help me facilitate things a little bit today as well. And so on behalf of this Sandusky City Schools, which is fine in town, we're honored and delighted to be a part of today's session as well. I think our Trotter Madison team might win the trophy today, we're coming from the longest distance of theirs. And I think it speaks of not only their commitment to education, but their interest in helping resolve matters that impact all of our children across the state of Ohio. So with that, we're going to, we're going to open up our first session today. Okay, are we ready?
Yeah, sorry about that.
Now, if y'all was in Sandusky, that'd be a problem right there. But I'm out of town, I'm on my best behavior. I'm on my best behavior today, Dr. May, I'm on my best behavior. And poor Dr. Willis is sitting there going, I know I need to do something, I know I'm supposed to do something, everything's okay. Before I bring Dan Hillson up, you know, Sandusky, Lorraine, and Lyria, and districts of that nature from the old Buckeye Conference days, we used to play a lot of football together, and usually after the football game, whoever lost was gonna fight in the parking lot after school. So I told President Ballard that today there would be no fighting after this session between Sandusky and Youngstown, Sandusky and Lorraine, we're gonna all be on the same team today, working hard to make a difference on behalf of our children. So I wanna acknowledge the president-elect of the Ohio Alliance of Black School Educators, who's with us today, my friend Todd Nemeceo, they just had their conference in Columbus last week. He's from Sandusky as well, and we're partnering together to network with a bunch of different groups to make good things happen. Dan Hillson is a lawyer and a lobbyist with Retzl and Andrews out of Columbus. He is working diligently with the Ohio Midsize Group, along with the First Ring Superintendent's Group of the Cleveland area, and with a number of other districts to address education policy matters. And we're very pleased that Dan drove up from Columbus today to be with us. He's gonna give us an update on the activities going on in the state legislature around HB70 and other fiscal matters that are impacting our schools. And so with that, with that, Dan, come on up. We appreciate you being here. There's a handout that he has. Dr. Kay, Dr. Sturgill, can you assist me in passing this out, please? That way, he can get up and get started. Just give him a nice hand. Welcome, Dan.
Good morning, everybody. I also would like to introduce my colleague, Alex Thomas. Alex is also with Retzl, and what we would like to do is kind of provide you with our perspective of what's happening and what sort of, in the last year, year and a half, from the perspective of an advocate, right? So we heard from the legislators, and they're very involved in what's happening and trying to drive certain behaviors, and I've just starting to work with Joe Miller, but have worked with Senator Fetter for all 19 years, I think. And so our perspective, there's kind of four things we're looking to do. One is stop the proliferation of the ADCs, return local control, revise the report card so we're actually measuring academic performance, not all the other things that the report card currently purports to measure, and then also providing the schools tools to improve academic performance, and it's kind of in that, in that fashion. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Alex. He's gonna get us started, and then I'll sort of wrap up and kind of tell you where I think we find ourselves.
All right, thanks, Dan. I'm actually gonna take this off here, because I'm too short to reach it. Thanks, everyone, for having us again. Just wanted to start off by giving a little bit of an overview of what's going on in the State House. There are several pieces of legislation currently moving in both the House and the Senate that impacts the Academic Distress Commission and the provisions in HB70. So just to give you a little bit of an overview of how some of those things are interplaying right now. So I don't know if we have the... Yeah, so just, I'll start with, you know, obviously, many of you are involved in one or more of these groups. All of these organizations from Basso, ASBO, OFT, OEA, Fordham, and then the school district organizations directly, the Ohio Eight, which are the big schools, First Ring, the schools around Cleveland, and the Midsize Urbans that Doc Sanders just mentioned to you. All of these groups are actively engaged and prioritizing these matters. Of course, everyone's currently, you know, focused on other items as well in education, like school funding and many other things, but all of these groups have committed to making this particular issue a priority, because folks like you have made it very clear, this is something that we need to be spending time on. There are a few bills in the House right now that are interacting with this space. The first one, the House Bill 122, it's actually a reintroduction of a bill that many of you saw in the last General Assembly. It eliminates Ed Choice and the Ed Choice expansion and the Cleveland Scholarship, and rolls it all into a new opportunity scholarship program. It also pulls the funding out, so it's not deducted directly from the school districts, but funded in a separate line item. Representative Kaler is working on this issue right now in the House. We're not quite sure if this bill's gonna get any movement at the moment, but just something to be aware of, we met with Representative Kaler on this a few weeks ago, and he feels like Ed Choice is going to explode, is the phrase that he uses over and over again. So he's looking to fund that separately. Again, probably not going to move anytime soon. Representatives Cup and Patterson in the House are working on a new school funding model that may address some of this issue. Moving on, there are two bills right now primarily in the House Education Committee that deal directly with academic distress commissions. Representatives Hambley and Kent Smith have introduced House Bill 127, which started as just a moratorium on the creation of any new academic distress commissions. It was amended just this week, I think, in committee to dissolve currently existing academic distress commissions as well. Also, House Bill 154, Representative Miller is here today, and his joint sponsor, Representative Jones, I think takes a more detailed look at how to better deal with the issue of struggling schools. It also dissolves existing ADCs. It was amended this week as well to make some changes to the improvement plans and sort of the timeline in which those plans are implemented in the school district, all preserving local control and giving school districts, I think, the flexibility to implement plans that actually, you know, can benefit their unique districts with input from local community leaders. And Representative Miller, correct me if I'm off-base on any of that.
No, that's pretty accurate.
Right. And then lastly, the budget bill, House Bill 166, technically introduced by Representative Olssleger, but as of right now, these are the governor's proposed initiatives on a number of items, from healthcare to education, to, you know, really every area of state policy. There are some provisions related to academic distress commissions in that bill. They, I think the governor tried to take some, but not all, of ODE's recommendations. If you saw those, they came out, I think, last month. That was in, a study that was published in response to a provision that was passed into law last year, requiring ODE to take a look at what's going right and wrong with the ADCs as currently implemented. So Governor Dewine has proposed some language around ADCs. Still gives the superintendent, the state superintendent, a lot of, I'll say, interaction or involvement in how these are implemented. So that's what's going on in the House. There's several pieces of legislation that deal with ADCs in sort of different forms, and I think members of the House are having a pretty robust conversation right now around what is the best way to take action to remedy this situation. A few pieces of legislation also in the Senate, really one primary bill in the Senate. Senator Manning's here, actually, today, has introduced a bill that makes some pretty significant changes specifically for Lorraine. So that's another bill that's actively being heard and moving in the legislature right now. So I think your representatives here and some others around the state are showing some real leadership on this issue and recognizing this is a real challenge for us. So we thank them for that really important work. And then, you know, Senator Laner, who's the chair of the Senate Education Committee, is also engaging on this issue. She's trying to, I think, take a big-picture view on how do we really fix this problem? Like Dan mentioned, she recognizes the issues with the assessments themselves, and what are we really measuring when we're looking at school districts and school buildings? So she's convening a meeting this coming week with some superintendents and some other folks from the education community to talk about the struggles with academic performance and how we remedy this. So that, I threw a lot at everyone there. Are there any questions about any of that, or do any of the members of the General Assembly wanna contribute any of that? Did I miss anything? Feel free to jump in. Yeah?
When you keep saying that it's moving along in the legislation, how long does this moving along take?
That's the question, right? So she asked, you know, I suggested a few times that these bills are moving through the process, and how long does that process take? You know, the answer is sometimes a little bit unknown. The bills, most of these bills have had several hearings now in both, in their respective education committees in the House or the Senate. None of these bills have been voted on out of committee, and that's, that would be just kind of the first step in a several-step process. The bill has to be voted out of the committee, then the chamber, either the House or the Senate, would need to deliberate as a full body and vote on that bill, and then it goes over to the other chamber, where it's deliberated on committee again, voted on committee, and then passed out of that chamber, where it, presuming there were no changes to the bill in the second chamber, it would go to the governor for his signature or veto. So I don't know that we have an exact timeline on some of this stuff. The budget bill has a hard deadline. That bill must be signed by the governor by the end of June, as the fiscal year for the state starts July 1. So the provisions related to ADC in the budget, if they were to stay in that bill as introduced, would be signed by the end of June. That is highly unlikely, both the House and the Senate are taking a hard look at the governor's proposal on this and many other things, and will make very substantial changes to that over the course of the next couple of months. But I think, you know, right now, at least in the House, where a couple of these bills are being heard in Education Committee, I think, and we had a conversation with some folks in leadership and the chairman's office this week, I think they're hearing a lot of input from folks like us right now, and they're hearing the discussion that's being had around both of the two bills in the House, and now seeing what the governor's introducing the budget. I think there's just a desire to try to figure out what the best way forward is, which bill it might be, what format that, you know, bill might take, and then I would expect to see movement on that in the coming weeks. I wish I had a better, harder timeline for you there, but it's certainly full speed ahead, I think, in the legislature to get this done. It's not something that we wanna rush and do incorrectly, but everyone understands the urgency of this and just how critical it is. And I, sorry if I sound like I'm speaking for the legislature, I'm not, but that's my impression of having spent some time with your representatives and others.
So you're sort of saying that it might happen this year?
Oh, I, she asked if it might happen this year. I think everyone firmly intends for something to happen by the summer. Yeah?
The HB 154, my reading of what you presented here talks about removing ADCs, but what we were presented with was not only ADCs would be eliminated, but CEOs. So has that changed? Has that changed?
CEOs are creatures of the ADCs. So if the ADC goes away, yeah.
Oh, so that's a given, okay. Okay. And our CEO has resigned effective the end of July, and so we're currently in the process, well, they are currently in the process of selecting his replacement. So what happens if, hopefully, HB 154 is put into place? How, just generally speaking, how will that impact what our local folks are doing?
Timing for that will be interesting from the standpoint that a bill, once it's passed, unless it has an emergency clause, is not effective for 90 days after passage. So even if something is in the budget, it doesn't become effective till the end of September, early October. So you are gonna have time where you're gonna need somebody, right? And then that somebody may have a very short tenure in that position as CEO.
Can you clarify to everybody here how the urgency takes the 90 days off, and then how in the budget, if there is appropriations added to the policy, then the 90 days is no longer in fact?
Yeah, so what happens typically, the budget bill is a very thick bill, and it has all the appropriations for all the different aspects of state government. And in my 37 years of experience, I have never seen a budget bill that doesn't have at least some language that is circled and targeted with an emergency clause. An emergency clause isn't really any different than what you deal with, right? It's for the safety, health, and welfare of the people. So this clearly could qualify, I mean, because you're changing the whole structure of a school system. So now, it could be challenged in the courts, but I don't see, first of all, who would challenge, and then secondly... And then, secondly, I think it would clearly pass the constitutional muster. And so then it becomes effective upon the governor's signature, which will be June 30th to July 1st, usually about midnight of June 30th to July 1st is when the governor usually is frantically trying to sign that bill. So, thank you. That's a perfect segue. Once again, my name is Dan Hilson, and I wanted to sort of start that, as you can see, especially for those who have been involved for a while, perseverance does pay dividends. There's a reason I have a flat forehead. I've been beating against the wall for 30-some years on various issues. All of you are experiencing the same thing. If you continue to ask for a redress of grievances, that's the beauty of our system. Usually you'll get them. They may not be exactly the way you want them, but there will be attention. I see Dr. Rice is here. She sat in committee with me last summer when we could get hardly anybody's attention on this issue. And we had then Representative Fetter, who had sponsored a bill, we had talked about it, said, "Look, this moratorium's bad. We're going to have all these schools going into ADC. This, you know, the Department of Education is neither equipped, nor is it in a position to run schools." That's not what they do. And she agreed and drafted an amendment and tried real hard to get it into 216. And Dr. Rice was there to see something that I had never seen in 30-some years, where the chairman was losing the vote, clearly losing the vote. So they stopped committee, went out to get a couple of members, because there are members or maybe have two or three simultaneous committees going on. They brought members in and they quickly realized, "Uh-oh, they're on the other side. They're for the amendment." And so he just picked up the gavel and said, "We're stopping committee," and went home.
Sure did.
And I've never seen that. I've never seen that where they, you know, totally lose control and then did not come back and meet for multiple weeks because they could not get the change vote. Because what had happened is they had called a vote to table the amendment, which just stops it. That was defeated. So that meant there had to be a vote on the amendment. They called the vote, but then called for the vote, but never actually called the vote, and they were stuck. So it was a very interesting, you know, procedurally, to see this happen. And then Senator Fetter and Representative Smith negotiated with then Chairman Brenner on this, "Well, we're at least going to have a study. We're not going to, we're not going to waste this opportunity." So that's sort of where we got to. And also what was interesting is I remember telling Senator Laner and some others, I says, "This ADC is going to run amok. We're going to have six, eight, 10 more schools. Madison Trot was on the verge, Warrensville, Maple Heights." And the governor's office and the Department of Education quickly tried to put a damper, say, "That's ridiculous. That's not going to happen." And then what happened in October? I was wrong. It was not eight more schools. It was 14 more schools that were slotted now to be on the pathway to ADC. And I think that got a lot of people's attention as well. So even though we, it became sort of a fait accompli, because everybody knew the governor didn't say that he would veto any changes to the ADC, but he was quoted in the Youngstown Vindicator that "I will vehemently veto with all of my power and passion anything that changes that." Well, if you're a legislator, why are you going to vote for something that the governor's already told you you're going to veto? So just nothing happened. It just sat there. Move forward, this General Assembly, you asked the question about how long will this move? Procedurally, anything that's introduced in this General Assembly has to be dealt with in two years, okay? Because the General Assembly lasts two years. It'll stop in December of '20. And so either a bill passes, or if it doesn't pass, it's dead and it starts all over again. So that's really sort of your end timeline. We think it'll happen this year, but all the effort spent this year, if it doesn't pass, is still good for next year. But then it's over. So let's talk about two possible avenues for reform. It's just, once again, this is kind of procedurally. Number one, insert some language in the budget. There is some language there. It's very, very possible and probable, I would even say probable, that you'll find language from some of the other bills to include Representative Miller's bill finding its way into the budget. And it would be introduced through the primary and secondary subcommittee and then on to the Finance Committee. I think that's going to happen. Then it flows over to the Senate. The Senate's going to make some changes, because the Senate also has some ideas. But it's all in discussion. So that's avenue number one. The reason why that's a good choice is because, as Alex said, there's a date certain, June 30th, that bill has to pass, okay? So you know what you're going to get by June 30th. The second one is, we just have a standalone legislation like we have, and it works through the normal process. Because the legislature's tied up working with the budget, those other bills don't move very fast right now. There is some movement, but there is, I mean, the legislature's kind of all consumed with the budget, because there's a lot, I mean, you know, it's literally this thick, and there's a lot to deal with. So those are your two avenues. What I think will happen is both. I think there'll be some, and I'll talk about this later, some reform in the budget, and then bites two and three at the apple will happen in some subsequent standalone legislation and/or other bills. If anybody in here ever heard the concept legislative intent, they'll talk about when a bill, you know, something's being usually challenged in the courts. Well, what was the legislative intent? What I will tell you, there is no such thing. There's 132 legislators that have a different intent and different concept, and that's what we have here. We have a lot of people with a lot of ideas that will coalesce at some point in time and pass some reform. I would say that that soup is being brewed right now or being cooked. It's not ready yet, but it will happen. And I am seeing a completely different attitude by the members of the General Assembly this year than last year. So let's talk a little bit about what I'll call the four steps. This is what the House seems to be advocating, and I'm using him now collectively after talking to many of the members, what's going to happen. So step one, which is the House Bill 127, started out, stop the bleeding, moratorium, one-page bill, everybody can read a one-page bill and understand it. No more ADCs. That slightly got changed now, not to no more ADCs, but let's get rid of ADCs. Much different, okay? Because now you've got to replace it with something, as Representative Miller said, you've got to do something. So that would be step one, stop the ADCs. Number two, and I think it is this priority, is return local control to the districts that are already in ADCs. I know Representative Miller expressed to us in a private meeting with him that he is very concerned that if we do something about stopping on the moratorium, that the legislature kind of moves on to the next step and forgets about those three schools. And we assured them, no, the ring of 21, and the mid-sized urbans have advocated, and along with the Big Eight, we're not doing that. We're not going to let those three schools flounder out there. So for the three schools that are here, you have a lot of support by your brethren in the education community that they're not going to let that happen. And Representative Miller has advocated, he's not going to let that happen. And Senator Fetter, same thing, so. And sometimes, you know, people have the best intents, but you can see they get stymied, it doesn't work. I actually, I'm pretty sure something's going to happen. So we're going to see that. So step two was that return the local control. Step three, this is a little harder. This is the piece that I don't know if we can get done in time for the budget. And that is, what are we measuring with our report card? It's interesting. I've read a couple treatises and some research papers that say academic proficiency exams are designed to distinguish and rank students. They are not good measurements for school districts or even school buildings. It's kind of like taking a thermometer and putting it into a saucer of water because you want to measure the quantity of water. Wrong tool, okay? It just doesn't work. So what we really want to measure is academic performance. In order to increase academic performance, you have to have a baseline, okay? You have to have a starting point. We don't do that. So the whole idea of using academic proficiency exams from students to measure a school building is not, you're not getting a very clear picture. But here's what it does measure. It does measure poverty. It measures parental control or involvement, just go down through the list. These are all the things. These are all, but that doesn't tell us whether or not the buildings are good. And I'm sure many of you have tried this, I've tried it with legislators, which is, if you take a school and take the superintendent, the board, and all the teachers, and put them into an F school, and do the same with the F, are you going to, within a couple of years, are they going to change around? And they'll go, "Of course not." And said, "So then it's probably not the superintendent, not the school board, not the teachers, that's the problem, right?" There are other issues at bay. So I think they're starting to come around to that, not all, but many of them. The last step, which is probably the hardest, which is what's this, you know, how do we reform our academic improvement? And how do we get there? And so here are some of the things. Identify the areas for improvement, adopt evidence-based practices, accountability's a part. Every legislator that I talk to wants accountability. Now, what that means is different to different legislators, but accountability's going to be a part. And then one of the things that Dr. Sanders has talked big about, and I think we're really making progress, is this peer-supported reform in coaching, that you learn better from your peer's school districts, not from Columbus. Columbus sends somebody up and tells you how to change and how to reform, and you kind of looked at them, and we've heard everything from them. "I fired that guy two years ago because he was terrible. Now he's telling me how to run my district?" You know, we hear all of this. So that's one of the areas. Sort of, real quick, the summary. Growing recognition that the ADC experiment, shockingly, has worked nowhere, and it's not working in Ohio either, okay? The state can't take over the schools, they can't run the schools, bad mission, let's Report card. A lot of people are saying, "Yeah, our report card needs reformed." And then also, the last sort of piece, as always, there's going to be cooperation/competition between the House and the Senate how to solve this. Everybody's going to have different concepts. And I learned a long time ago, we never create legislations that's the best possible legislation that can be created. It's the best possible legislation that the parties can agree to. So just remember that. So don't, I mean, yes, we're going to see reform. Yes, we're going to see improvement. It may not be exactly what you want, but it's going to be better. And I think that's, I think that's it. Yes. Thank you very much.
Let's give Dan and Alex another hand. Thanks, guys. Appreciate that. I'm going to ask if President Ballard and Mr. Demakia, Dr. Rice, and Mr. Shad would take the seats over where the Treasury is. We're going to transition to our next panel. So if you would proceed there right now, that would be excellent. And Dr. Rice, would you please take that microphone, if possible, with you to the podium, to the table there? Thank you very much. Our next session is entitled, focuses on the impact of the ADC on local control, economic development, and academic growth in the districts that have been impacted. Our president, Mr. Ballard, is going to be the facilitator for this session. You may stay seated where you are. And then our three board members, Dr. Rice, Mr. Demakia, and Mr. Shad will provide responses, and then we'll save a portion of the session for questions from the audience as well. I want to acknowledge one of my board members that's present, Mr. Crable, who is here, former board president, member of the board. Thank you, Jeff, for being here. They are very gracious and allow me to be engaged in many of these extra activities, and we deeply appreciate that. Mr. Ballard.
Yes, sir. Thank you all. Thank you to the panelists for participating in this panel. As you know, my name is Mark Ballard, and I've been on the school board now for four years. And I ran for this school board because I wanted to be a contributor to our schools, to our community. And we were elected to do just that, and that privilege has been taken away from us. So the way this panel is going to run, I will first give each panelist an opportunity to introduce themselves, say what your role is with your board, and how active you are, and what you do in your active community. And then I will pose a few questions for you all, for us to just kind of, questions that are important to all of us in this room. So I'll start to my colleague, Mr. Demakia, please.
Good morning. Thank you all for being here, and, you know, this is an extremely important issue, obviously. Three districts have been drastically affected by organized crime, if you will. You know, I asked Mark, I said, "You sure you want me to sit up here and talk?" Because I don't tend to play nice when it comes to House Bill 70. But again, my name's Tony Demakia. I'm the vice president of Lorraine Board of Education, and again, thank you all for being here.
Thank you. Good morning. Mr. Demakia and I have been on several different boards and events dealing with House Bill 70. But my name is Mary Rice. I'm from East Cleveland, Ohio. I'm a board member for, this is my fourth year. Currently, I am, my board president appointed me as president of the House Bill 70 Committee. And my thing is to get, to do whatever I can to abolish House Bill 70.
Hi, I'm Ron Shad. I've been on the Youngstown City School Board for five years, and my role is similar to yours, too. I'm the committee chair for our HB 70 piece, and we've just been actively just wanting to bring attention to this issue because it's funny to me that they tried to say that the seven people that are on our board were bad for education, but didn't look at this law and what was going into place and how it took away voters' rights, taxpayer rights, and essentially is a union buster. So we're looking at this as saying, like, this piece of legislation destroys communities, not builds them up. So we've been fighting actively since the ruling came out.
So this is the first opportunity we've had to sit in an official board meeting to have this conversation collectively. So to any of you or all of you, how has the local, how has the ADC affected your district and your community as a whole?
Where do you start? You know, when we first started in Lorraine, we approached it as, you know, and I promised myself I would never use this word because it's been so abused in Lorraine. We promised ourselves we would collaborate with the State of Ohio and the Ohio Department of Education, the state superintendent. So we played nice. We approached it as a situation where, listen, it's inevitable. This bill's going to come down. We need to accept it. We need to embrace it. We need to do what we need to do. We got with all of our seven unions and got contractual language that was aligned directly to House Bill 70. We got an academic plan with our current superintendent and all of our staff that was directly aligned with the language in House Bill 70. And all along the way, ODE and everybody patted us on the back and says, "Wow, you guys are doing great work. We're so happy. You know, everything's doing great in Lorraine. Awesome." And that was with the first commission. The commission, they worked collectively with us, and we were at the table, and I believe at that time, we all had the same mission and vision as far as enhancing our quality of education. Nobody on the Board of Ed or in our school district will ever say that, "Hey, listen, we don't do the best that we can. We need to get better." There's no question about that. But the reality is, there are some barriers that we have not addressed, and House Bill 70 doesn't address them. So in the beginning, we embraced this process, and, you know, after they got rid of, as we went through the law, they abolished the first commission, and then Lorraine got slapped in its face by the State of Ohio, and they got this new commission, and it was just downhill, where it was, it was a takeover, an aggressive takeover, where they came in and just blew our district up. And it started with our central office, you know, our sitting superintendent, who had more qualifications than anybody, that they searched and found, Dr. Jeff Graham at the time. They did this national search and came up with these five candidates that had no qualifications whatsoever to run a school district. And then we get stuck with the buffoon we have now that it's just, I mean, you can't make up the nonsense that has occurred in our school district. And, you know, currently, as we sit, the irreparable harm that has occurred in Lorraine to our students, to our community, to our teachers, it's been a blatant attack. And I said organized crime earlier because I- And I, I said organized crime earlier, because I believe it has been. I, I think this is the, for lack of better ways to put it, the, the most racist bill that I've ever seen. I mean, think about what this bill is attacking. It's attacking minority, urban, poverty-inflicted school districts. What, what are they doing? And, and I don't, you know, I don't wanna get off track here, and I don't wanna offend any of our legislators here, because I do appreciate all the work that you guys are doing and your support, but I've lost complete faith in our legislative system in, in fixing this problem, because there's, I mean, I'm not sure that Lorraine's gonna recover at this time, where we're at. And, you know, this, this bill needed to be fixed a long time ago. A year and a half ago, to be honest with you. And the more time that we waste with the political nonsense that we have in Columbus, and, you know, I'm just, I'm just gonna say this, and I'll end it and move it on to you guys, but what I don't understand is, our governor controlled our state Board of Education and our state superintendent to get House Bill 70 passed overnight. But yet here we are, with bills that are gonna fix a problem that clearly everybody has admitted is such a bad situation for public education, but yet now, these bills have to go through this long process of getting the constitutional three hearings and making sure that we pass it through this house, and pass it through the senate, and, you know, now we're gonna push this along. But, you know, our current sitting governor, who, who says that he is in support of fixing this problem, you know, if our former government had control of our state superintendent, our state Board of Education, why doesn't our current governor have that prob, that, that power? You know, what, what are we doing? And, you know, to be honest with you, you know, Paulo Di Maria is, he's, he's gotta go?
Yes.
And if the governor believes in fixing this problem, you know, then take control of your nine appointments to that state Board of Education. You let them know, "I need this fixed, I need it fixed now." But, I mean, I can go on and on and on, but this bill is so bad, it's just done so much damage, and I, I wanna, I mean, it makes my stomach sick just thinking about it, and the time that we've dealt with this. So, and I know you're gonna hear similar stories, because it's, it's clear what House Bill 70 has done to public education, and more importantly, to our poverty-inflicted and minority urban school districts that we're all sitting here to see.
Thank you. I'm, I'm just so upset that you're not passionate about this issue. He did do a great job, you know, certainly did. Everything that he has said, ditto. And let me add just a few other things. When I, when I first heard that Youngstown was going into the ADC process and going to be taken over, et cetera, I started reading everything that I could possibly read about the issue, so that I would be knowledgeable, to try to understand. Plus, I'm a Youngstowner, so I wanted to really know what was going on with the Youngstown schools. I graduated from South High School in Youngstown, so I said, "What?" You know, so as I began to read and try to understand, and then begin to look at some of the political things, I said, "Wow, this is wrong on every single solitary issue." Then I heard about Lorraine, and, you know, that Lorraine had embraced the House Bill 70 process, and that they were really gonna cooperate with everyone, and they were gonna, you know, they were gonna turn this process around, and students, the students and children and families were gonna benefit from it. So, I look around, and, one, about seven months later, all types of things were in the press about Lorraine and what was happening. And I began to read even more. It's, and then when East Cleveland, when we were threatened, that's when I, you know, I put on my little shoes and start going everywhere I possibly can to learn more about the process and see what was happening. But in the meantime, before it even came to us, teachers began to leave the system. Teachers who had been there for years and, and wanted to retire from the East Cleveland school system. They left because they were scared of what had happened in Youngstown and what had happened in Lorraine, and so they were expecting it to happen in East Cleveland, and they left. Not only that, right here, we have a grandparent in here whose daughter left and took her children out of the system because she was afraid. That's only one incident that I'm telling you about, and the grandmother's right here, so that she can share with you as well. It's happened all over our city, that people were moving out of our city because of House Bill 70. That's before it even came. Teachers began to leave. So therefore, at the start of this school year, we started at a deficit because of House Bill 70, and it really hadn't even came yet. It is the most destructive, how in the world could this governor have even, and he wants to run for president? Can you imagine what would happen across the United States if he got into any of those policies? Well, look what has happened with our cities, with our students, with our communities. And on that note, I'm not passionate about it either. I'll pass it over.
Well, for us, the biggest concern we had was that Youngstown was under academic distress in 2010. So, what did HB 70 fix if the state already had control over academics in our district? I mean, it was them revamping their plan about their performance, and not ours, because they had total control of our academic process. And no vote that our board has, has passed during that time was bad for education. Anything our superintendents needed during that time, they got. We, there was, it may not have been a unanimous vote, but they got the vote to get whatever they needed to get the job done. So, our, our focus was, why create this bill that puts more emphasis on destroying the local control piece when the state already had control? How, would, would, would measures need to be taken for the state to reinvent what they do? I don't think that's new legislation, I think that's a new approach to education and, and how we view it in Ohio. One of the pieces that I'll add to this piece, we lost a lot of staff, too. And part of that staff was not, part of that loss was not only because HB 70 was coming, it was a big part of it, but the other part was because the state had changed requirements for retirement for teachers. So they had to get out early. So some of that change impacted us in a way to where we lost, we had an average of ten years of, of experience for our teachers, and that dropped to seven. So, I want, I want it to be known that HB 70 played a huge role in that.
Yes.
But also how we treat education in our state played a bigger role in, in making us lose ten-year professionals that had to retire in order to have a better life after education or after their, their jobs. So that was a huge thing for us. Another thing, how HB 70 has impacted us is the lack of money being spent in the classroom. If this is an academic issue, why is it in our district that in the first year that the CEO took over, $6.1 million less was spent in the classroom? Then additional 0.8% the following year, which is about 7.2%. So we're looking at, if you look at the time period from when the CEO came in to now, there's been $13 million less spent in the classroom. How do you fix an academic problem when you spend less in the classroom? We talked about prior to HB 70, prior to us having a CEO, was right-sized in our district. So we were shrinking our administrative costs, like losing people through attrition and that sort of thing. And he hired 32 people at 100K to 120K salaries. And, and we pick up their retirement.
Wow.
We pick up another 10% of their retirement. So how did that fix our problem? And then the solution to this piece, to kinda balance the budget, was to eliminate 18 people who were in direct services, like social workers and that sort of thing. Eighteen people lost their jobs at a total of $600,000. But, we spent $600,000 under the CEO, just in our coaching, for our sports. But you get rid of social workers, and you increase our, you create 20, I'm sorry, 32 new positions at 100-plus salaries. You know, so we're talking about 3 million, 3.5 billion dollars in salaries. So, how do we come back from that? How do we come back from us having a surplus of $23 million, now us having a surplus of $10 million? He used $13 million in, in one year. He, he started practices that weren't sustainable. You, you can't spend at that, at that volume and, and be able to sustain that, that, that process. So that, that's the problem we're in, is that even when this comes to an end, we have to make some strict changes on how we look at the educational futures of our children based off the money that's been spent in one year.
So I'm going to say, midway through this, we're going to have question and answers from the audience, but we do have two questions from the legislators who are trying to help us fix this. So, Mr. Mueller?
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Mr. Shad, we've seen this in Lorraine as well. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but can, can those of you that are here that are experiencing this, is there starting to show a pattern of the mindset that we come into these districts?
Yes.
We shift money, like a business, up into the executive's hands? Ooh. Up into the executive's hands, all right? Away from our customers, our children, and I don't mean to demean the children as customers, but, you know, the Kasek model, it's all about the CEO running the business. And away from where it really has its impact. Is it that, or is it, "Let's go in and spend like this so we can blow up the financial part of the system and force a takeover because now it's a financial thing?" I'm starting to see a strategy and a pattern here. Do you, do you see that as well in the, the districts?
Yeah, we, we feel that way.
East Cleveland, here it comes.
We have a, we, we have a levy that we need to place on the ballot, and one of the...
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, and so, so the question becomes, do we put a ballot, do we put a levy on the ballot and hope that there's a difference in, in spending practices? Or do we know that, or do we predict that this money will be wasted in a way that it's been wasted already? For example, to give you an idea of the, of the spending, we estimate that he spent, since he's been in, in power, $3.5 million in legal fees, right? So to give you an example of that, the year that we sued this, the state, started our lawsuit, and handled all of the law issues in our district, we spent $150,000.
Wow.
In one year, we spent $150,000, but in, not even, in, in, by the time we end this year, there will probably be 3, $3.5 million spent in legal fees. What for? He has two law firms. What for? You know, so, I mean, I, I, I do, I appreciate his, his question, because we feel that way. We feel that we'll be in a situation where in HB 70, part of this clause is that they can give your buildings away. So what happens when we don't have the money to operate those buildings? Well, they may give it to another adjacent school district, or another for-profit organization that will use taxpayer dollars to gain profit and not put any of that money back into the community. So, yeah, we, it's, it's, it's twofold. I mean, it's top-heavy spending that, so we, so we're busted and don't have any, any monies, and, and two, a way to definitely put our district up for sale when we can't afford to maintain it anymore.
I would like to also draw our attention to the past. He and some of the superintendents here and public school advocates who've been around for 30 years can remember the rhetoric during the Deroff case, that there's too much top spending from administration. They're wasting the money. We can't put more money into the Deroff case and into public schools because of the administrative costs. Now, overlay the, what we have as a historical, as a fact pattern right now. That's why I'm saying, follow the money. If you can't get the public records requests from ODE or anybody else, that's what legislators are good for. We can park with our sleeping bags outside the door till we get it. And so that is our case. Because they can't talk out of both sides of their mouth, 30 years ago, we couldn't, we couldn't fund public education because of too much administrative costs. Look what we have now, a runaway train. If the superintendents in this room did this, they would be hung upside down with their pinky toenails. But this system, you know, by ODE, and legislators are saying that this is all okay now, as a state takeover. So I, I really feel we need to put all of these facts that you're putting together for Youngstown, East Cleveland, Lorraine. And when you overlay all of this, it's a clear case that this needs to be stopped, because our school system, no matter what they want at the end of the day, isn't gonna be able to function, and our children are not gonna be able to learn. And the business people need to be brought into this narrative. The Business Roundtable, your Chamber of Commerce, they need to see the crisis, so it can be presented the next time to them. And we can organize that fact, because I'm sure they would be horrified by what you just said here. I'm very concerned about teachers leaving. You've got experienced teachers who are dedicated.
Yes.
They are not going to put up with this. So we have a teacher crisis that's being created by design.
Yes.
Are we gonna have all Teach America students who just feel like they have a heart for teaching to be, I'm sorry? There's a reason why doctors go through professional training. Teachers do, too. We know what we're doing. We need to equip them to do their job. And that's the exact opposite of what I've just heard from your experience. So thank you, and just keep following the money, lay out what they're wasting, and then the goal is for the school board, which was kicked out of your power, to put on the levy, for the voters to have enough confidence in your school district to pass that levy, to continue that fact pattern. So really, this is chaos. This is total chaos, and so I just wanna thank you for being on the tip of the spear, and I believe you're gonna lead us out of this by all of the facts that you've just presented here.
Thank you.
That kinda leads me to, she kinda teed up my very next question, and my very next question to you all, is public school districts serve as a key contributor to the economic development of the community by providing key workforce development support. What is your perception of economic impact and feedback from the business community in your districts?
Well, as we know, that our communities don't go if our school districts don't go. Families aren't moving into our communities, businesses aren't thriving, new businesses aren't coming in. The economic impact, and again, I'm gonna digress back to what Mr. Shad said a minute ago, is Lorraine's in the same situation. We have a renewal levy, which, in our community, knock on wood, is just about an automatic pass, because the folks in our community are very supportive, and they understand what that money goes to and what we need it for. It's no new money, it's a renewal. And this situation and the CEO has put us in a position to where we won't even discuss the levy, because of the irresponsible spending, because of the lack of local control. And when you look at that, you, you put your district at a great disadvantage when we know that we need that renewal levy money. You know, we passed a levy a few years back for the first time in almost 21 years, which is very difficult to do in this current climate. So, when you have a situation like House Bill 70, and, and the damage that is done, and the destruction to not just your school district, but your entire community, yeah, it has an impact on the economic development of our communities, because we're losing teachers. You know, some of these teachers live in our community, their kids go to our school buildings, and they're fleeing. I wouldn't stick around either. And to be honest with you, I'm at a point where I don't know what to tell them. I can't, I, I'm not one to lie to them, I'm not going to tell them, "Hey, it's gonna be okay," you know, just, just, you know, and for a long time, "Just hang in there. It's, it's gonna be right, we're gonna fix this thing." But, you know, as time goes on, and you keep seeing what's happening, you know, I'm not sure that the timeline is gonna match up to with what this school district needs to do in keeping these folks here. And when you look at Lorraine City Schools, which is probably the second or third-largest employer in Lorraine, maybe, second-largest employer in Lorraine, and you start losing folks, and you start replacing them with unqualified Teach for America people, that, that becomes a problem, because those folks aren't living in our community, they're not spending dollars in our local businesses, they're not eating in our community. You know, they come, and, just like our CEO, he, he won't move into our city and won't bring his kids to our school district, because it is unsafe in our school district. The very guy that made it unsafe is scared to bring his kids to our school district. So he bought a house in a community that is, you know, 25 minutes away, in Cuyahoga County, not even living in our county, which, you know, I don't expect our CEO or superintendent to live in our city. to live in our city, but support our community, and he doesn't do that. And this is a trend that we're seeing. And so the overall impact that it's going to have on our community, absolutely. You know, our whole community is going to lose that revenue in our businesses. And, you know, it's just devastating for everybody involved.
Thank you. I won't share a great deal of information, because everything that he has said, ditto. But you heard my previous comments about teachers leaving, about families leaving. Quite naturally, businesses are leaving as well. That's one of the major things. And East Cleveland, for those of you who don't know, is one of the poorest communities in the state of Ohio. So therefore, this one item is just like a seesaw, you know? We were up, and now we're down. Can't move one way or the other, other than going further down, rather, simply because of House Bill 70. It's devastating to the community economically and stability-wise as well. Our community is becoming far more unstable, simply because of the fact of House Bill 70's coming, and people are still not sure of what's happening. But I do want to share just one other thing with you about the ADC. When it was appointed, first appointed, there were several of us who went to the meetings, and we shared with the ADC, why don't you roll up your sleeves with us and not be this superpower above us, and let's work together? Can you imagine how powerful that could have been? That could have brought far more stability. It could have, it could have done a lot of things. I don't want to totally speculate, but it could have been a whole different scenario. For those of us who were on the board, for those of us that were in the community, we tried to talk to the ADC, come and be a part with us. Let's work together on this thing. Let's show a whole different model to the state and show them what can be done. No. What they did was, the second meeting of the ADC, they took it out of East Cleveland and took it 12 miles away at the Cuyahoga Community College, where many of our residents could not get there, who wanted to be there. See, the first meeting, the auditorium was stacked. It was standing room only. So therefore, do you think they wanted to do business with that, in that type of climate? No. So they took it 12 miles away at Cuyahoga Community College, and that's where they staged the second meeting. However, what we did was just like the old, in the '60s, see, because you have some '60s area people. We got on the telephone and went to calling. We called people. We got together, carpooled, and went down there, and we would not move until we were allowed to come into that meeting to hear what was going on. And they tried to go into executive session for three hours, but we won't even go there. Just to show you the climate of people, I just don't understand the state of Ohio. It's almost just like you're saying, well, we could care less who you are and what you are. We're going to roll our program out, and that is it. But the problem with that is this. You know, for adults, we're going to eventually get ourselves together and do whatever. But it's the children.
That's fine.
It is the children.
Absolutely.
And I just heard something that just broke my heart just two days ago. Now, I won't even go into the fact, I won't, there's a lot of things I just want to even go into, but their children are fighting, beginning, more fighting than ever before. I just heard this. Why do you think that is? If there's anxiety in the home, the kids become more anxious. And if they're more anxious, they're already going through puberty and those kinds of things. So therefore, what is going to happen? You're going to have more violence. That's the last thing we need in East Cleveland. Seriously, anywhere. You don't want, you want your children to learn to work together, to grow together, to achieve together. House Bill 70, it is a worse, it is a scourge on the Americans' fabric totally, not just in our three little communities, across the whole entire state and across our nation. Thank you.
Yeah. I just wanted to say this, is that we can't forget how HB 70 was built or designed. It was 84 secret meetings, and our chamber was involved with that meeting. Our chamber president, Tom Humphries, yeah, he was involved in that. Jim Tressel was involved in that. Bishop Murray of the Catholic Diocese in our area was involved with that. 84 secret meetings that developed this bill, and no inclusion of anyone who actually lived in the city, you know? But this was, this plan had happened. Our business community pretty much thought that this was a plan that would work, and they worked in tandem with these other people behind our backs, behind our city's back, to have these 84 meetings, 84 meetings that they did to devise this. And afterwards, we had, there was a grant that was given for the chamber to get involved in our school district, to have our children have mentor experiences. That grant was not really fulfilled in the way it should have been. And we have a chamber of almost 3,500 members, and we couldn't even have enough experiences for those, for 100 kids to get involved in the business community. So that, I think at the hardest, we have to realize that the people that should be at the table doing good on behalf of our districts, they're plotting behind our backs to make something that they feel is best for them and not best for our community.
So, my next question.
I was just thinking, Dr. Rice, that the most devastating thing about what is happening is the children. They, we can't get back that time that this is impacting them. We saw our children in East Cleveland coming to our meetings. They are very confused and chaotic and not understanding what's going on and frightened. And we can't, they can't regroup that time, nor the education that's taking place, or not taking place, because of the fears and the chaos and all of the change and whatever. And so I feel for our children, you know, what will be the impact ultimately for them that they've lost, you know?
And I'm going to, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add to that. In our district, this is what our children had lost. We lost our STEM programming in one of our high schools. We had a VPA in STEM program. Our CEO, we had also discovery schools that were STEM programs for children, third grades, eighth. He said that all schools should have STEM, so he eliminated the programs, but he didn't replace them with anything. So that was part of the issue that happened. And our VPA in STEM high school, Chaney, they had received an award from Apple for iPads for all the students. So we were on the right track. We were making the changes, and then you dismantled the program. We have our Youngstown Early Colleges, called Ran Early College now, where that school has been in the top Newsweek's top 500 high schools two years in a row, and it has received other accolades. And that program has constantly been under attack. And it's doing great work, but it's been constantly under attack. We lost our music programs. We don't have robust music programs in our elementary schools anymore. We, there's been a reduction in foreign language in our schools, as far as our Spanish classes. They've moved from having teachers to having the students use Rosetta Stone and other programs of that sort. There's been...
Third grade reading.
Yeah. Our third grade reading, before the CEO was in charge, we had a B. Now we have a D. In a program that, you know, that we were making strides, real strides in that program. And now that was something that was removed, because you remove elements that supported students, like our Ohio State Literacy Program that was intact, our Mayor Court's program where we had people come in and work with students extra and that sort of thing. So we, there are tangible things that our district...
I'm just going to pull it back, because I've been eliminated down to about two minutes, and I got to get to the next question. But as board privilege, one of my board members had a question.
I just want to say, when I became a board member, I'm new. And I came on that board, I thought I was in Alice in Wonderland. That's how new I was. And I thought, well, here it is. If I want a vote for the kids, all I had to say, I'm for the children, vote yes. If there's something I didn't want for the children, vote no. And all of a sudden, they said, choop, 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 you better get real. And I found out that the transparency from our CEO was financial fog, and that that's what I was running around with. What I did not understand, and I still don't, if you send all that education, why is it that no one decided that I'm going to work with the community, I'm going to work with the Board of Education? I don't care what the state said, because I'm going to do this for the children. And none of the CEOs from Youngstown, from Cleveland, or anything, said, this is what I'm going to do. I'm going to be very frugal with the money. I'm going to help and raise them up. And none of that happened. And it was as if they all talked together and decided that they were going to put on another layer of administrative, of nonusable administrative type of, of, I don't know, people that intimidated the teachers and made the teachers, instead of feeling better and positive about themselves, made them feel, instead of, very negative. And that we start losing teachers. We start getting fear in the classroom. I had never heard of that. I was such a happy camper going to school. I had perfect attendance from seventh to 12th grade. So they had to beat this into my mind. When I sat on the board, I couldn't understand that. Mr. Demakio had to take me down to Youngstown and make me sit with them so I could understand. And then I still didn't get all of it. And it was like I was in a different land. I did not understand how somebody could be so devious and just wreck education, because that was a hallmark to get us all where we wanted to go.
It was.
So I thought.
So Doc, I know I'm out of time, but I do want to at least pose this next question, because it's going to help our ADC members who are here as well. My next question is, common denominator is for all three ADCs identified district is that they are urban students who need additional support, serve high percentage of special educational students, and have pockets of poverty and high social, emotional needs. Do you all believe that the ADC board fully understands the makeup of these districts and have these ADCs address these issues with the community? And with that, I'm going to allow you guys a little short, but we do have some ADC members here who are familiar with their other members. And if you guys would have any insight or input to that, please share. I think there's a mic right to your left there.
I'm Steve Clathen. I've been on the ADC since the summer of 17, I believe. And I'm also a teacher in the district, so I've always said that's like being dropped in the middle of a tornado. I was put on the commission as the second appointee. There was a person before me, and I also, just to clarify, I voted no in terms of hiring Mr. Hardy, due to the fact, and I didn't really know David at the time at all. My issue was the process in which he was brought in. I felt that it was hijacked, and that was the term that I used in my first-ever comment in meeting, because I felt that it was just a process that was just unethical in terms of how it was done, because there were candidates, including our superintendent at the time, Jeff Graham, who has been mentioned, had the qualifications that exuded those. But as far as the question of do the other members, I guess, is that what you are asking? The problem that I have, and this is just my take, and I can say, and Diane can say the same thing, not only have we both worked in the district, but we sent our kids to the district, okay? My daughter is a graduate of Lorain High School. She graduated in 2013. I'm very proud of that. I've said this a few times, so if you've heard it before, I apologize. She works in Columbus, is a financial planner. And in her office at Merrill Lynch, one of the things that they joke with, you have Lorain grit, okay? And one of our, our chair has used that hashtag in some of his tweets recently. But I'm proud that she went to Lorain High School. She's proud that she went to Lorain High School. And she took advantage of all the opportunities that we've had in Lorain. So Diane and I both identify not only with the school system, because we've worked there, we've sent our kids there. I can't say the same for the other Academic Distress Commission members. Part of the process being flawed immeasurably, and you've heard, everything that we're hearing here is, it makes your head want to explode. But the chairperson that was appointed by Paulo Demaria is from Columbus. I'm sorry, but the insanity of that right there tells you all you need to know. There were candidates locally, people that said, I would want to do this, when Tony Richardson stepped down and we needed a chair. We had candidates locally, that people said, hey. Then Paulo picked someone from Columbus. And nothing against Randall Sampson. I didn't know Randall Sampson at all, but he lives in Columbus. How can you come to Lorain and identify with the community and know where, you know, the local pizza place is, what the international, I mean, you're learning about the community. How can you make decisions that are going to be critical for the community? You have the other two members. One of them is from Toledo, and one of them is somewhat local. But I don't know where their informational track comes from, as it comes simply from the CEO. You know, Diane and I have done walkthroughs with board members. We, you know, we walk through buildings. We've talked to people. Obviously, I work there, so I hear it every day. Diane, you know, we've joked about, like, our lives have been taken over by this, because of so many people reaching out to us, is like, please, try to save us. They're desperate. This situation is beyond talks. It's, you know, we declared a state of emergency at a board meeting about a month ago, because this situation is so dire in Lorain. So I'll, I could talk for a week on this. And everything that they've said, ditto, as you said. It's absolutely true, and it's troubling. And I guess my, and I don't know if I'll have a chance to talk, please, the legislators, we need your help. And I've talked with all of you about that, and you know our feelings. The governor, we need your help. We need anybody that can assist us in getting out of this mess. And we can't wait until next year, two years. It has to happen like months ago, but it has to happen now.
I want to just address President Ballard's questions about, I believe with the other commissioners, I believe that there is a significant disconnect from really understanding the Lorain community, what the children need. Our children are not test scores. Our children, first and foremost, we must address the social and emotional needs of our kids. They cannot come to school and learn and be effective in their education unless we address the social and emotional needs first and the whole child. Wraparound services, social workers, quality alternative education programs is, needs to be a priority for Lorain City Schools. And with the current administration, what I've seen go on, that's not a priority. It's not a priority. Even curriculum has not been a priority. And when I came on board early January, to find out that this ADC was meeting quarterly with all of the distraught parents in the community, the distraught teachers, I'm thinking, it's in turmoil. And then we took a lot of time. We, I surveyed the teachers. 337 teachers completed a survey that I created. And Steve and I did four LEA listening sessions, just to give the teachers a forum in which they knew that they could come in and talk to us honestly about what was going on in the schools. And I just, I just could not believe what I've heard and what I learned. You know, I came into this, I was willing to help. I've been gone from Lorain for five years now. I spent 14 years in the district, seven years teaching and... I spent 14 years in the district, seven years teaching and seven years as the high school principal. And three children through the district. And my kids had a phenomenal education. I'm going to brag about my daughter. She's at Neomed. She's going to be a pharmacy doctor. She got her education from Lorraine City Schools, and I couldn't be a prouder parent. On top of being the principal there, it was a part of our lives for many years. And the turmoil that's going on in the district, we, I just hope that there is a quick, I mean, even going into next year, we cannot go into next year and think that we're going to survive this. So to the legislatures, to the government, to Columbus, we need help now. We are in a state of emergency, and we need help now. And it needs to happen before the start of the next school year.
Thank you. Thank you, Doc. I will yield the floor back to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. See me after class. You continue to need some additional assistance, Mr. President. Let's give our panelists a nice round of applause. I know there's so much more that you have to say, and we apologize. I'm going to ask if Mr. Brian DeSantis would come forward. Mr. DeSantis is the, is an associate attorney with Pebble and Waggoner. And President Brenda Kimball, president of the Youngstown School Board, you can come, yes, go to the table. President Kimball is a board member and president for the Youngstown City Schools. And as you know, there are, several school districts have pending lawsuits against ODE and other institutions relative to, you're okay, Mr. DeSantis. Other institutions relative to ADC and other matters. We thought it would be appropriate to have an update on the status of those lawsuits. And the current time is 10:56. And so we want to give President Kimball and Mr. DeSantis an opportunity to provide a five to seven-minute update, and then we'd like to open it up for questions from the floor. President Kimball, would you please start?
Okay. Thank you for this time. My update is short, but I'm going to use my whole seven minutes, because I have some other things I want to talk about here. Drop it tonight.
Yeah, please.
On March the 18th, we filed arguments with the Ohio Supreme Court. And basically, we're still waiting for them to hear them, and then we'll go into court. So that's all we have. March the 18th, we filed oral arguments and some briefs, and we haven't heard anything yet. But what I wanted to say, since we were the first to be taken over, I just think you need to know who was at the meetings. Mr. Shad began, I was trying to hand him this paper. I just want everybody to know how this went down. But we had our superintendent, Dr. Connie Hathorn. He was a part of the meetings. Jim Tressel hosted it at YSU. Judge Robert Douglas, who retired, never lived in our area at all. I don't believe his kids went to our school. Dr. Laura Meeks of Eastern Gateway, Tom Humphries of Youngstown Warren Regional Chamber, Jan Strasfield of the Youngstown Foundation, Nick Santucci of the Youngstown Warren Regional Chamber. And it's funny, because he sits on our commission for the state now, and he was hired by the Youngstown Warren Regional Chamber and the Youngstown Foundation, half and half on a salary to collect the demographics to shut our district down. So how is he there now, and he's supposed to move us forward? We have Buddy Hears from the Department of Education, Jimmy Shepard from the Department of Education, Sean O'Brien, House of Representatives, but he was from Trumbull County. Okay? There was Merrill Midriff, Governor's Office, Pete, I think this is LaPiba, Department of Education, Kevin Duff, Department of Education, and Richard Ross, Department of Education. So not only did they do this behind our backs, but they broke the sunshine law, because there's more than five of them there, but they said they didn't. They also said they kept no notes, and then these, somebody thought enough of me to send me their information. And so I just wanted that, you know, known, because you got to know how this started and understand how wicked it was. And in these minutes, if folks want a copy, you can get it. But it says, we have to keep this from the community. We cannot let this out. Nobody can know about this until the bill comes out. So, I mean, it was crooked, it was wicked, for Mr. Tressel to say that he had our students in mind was an absolute lie, and I'm saying it all the time, because you didn't have your dean of education there, and he's your expert. And if you're going to have a meeting like this about children you care about, you're going to invite your dean of education. So that's what's going on with us, and that's the reason we took it to court, because of the three reading rules. They did not give this bill any reading, and we feel like it should have had those readings, because everybody knows here that Denise Dreehouse's House Bill 70 was something totally different. It was for wraparound services, and for the state to fund those services, if the districts didn't have enough to fund it, which would build a school district, and then they added this amendment, which actually charters out a school district. So those were the reasons why we took it. There was no public opinion, and of course, it takes away our voters' rights and to redirect taxpayers' dollars to private entities that's made for public entities. So I just wanted people to know, because I just, you know, we were the first, and again, nobody wanted to touch us, but I thank God that we are where we are here today, and I can say I thank God, because we're not in the school buildings. So, but yeah, I just wanted you to know. And that's as far as we got, and the sad part about this is, I spoke to the attorney, and I asked him, what happens if the Supreme Court doesn't overturn this? He said, that's the end of the road for us. So we have to look at some other strategies, or maybe look at trying to go federal and do what we have to do to make this thing work, or get one of these bills passed. Thank you.
My name's Brian DeSantis, and I'm one of the attorneys that's been working proudly with the East Cleveland City District Board of Education. And I'll actually comment on both, I think, the case that's in front of the Supreme Court right now, which is the Youngstown case, and then also briefly on the case that East Cleveland has filed as well. So the case for, the Youngstown case has worked its way up to the Supreme Court, and I think it's probably really frustrating for you. It's a really long process. And it's a slow, long process. But what's in front of the court right now, and both parties have submitted their written briefs, and we're now, I guess we aren't, but Youngstown is waiting for oral arguments on the case. But the main issue is that what is being referred to as the three-reading rule. And the concept is that under the Ohio Constitution, legislation has to be read three times on three different days before it can become a law. And the issue is, when legislation is vitally altered or changed, it has to be read three times. So then the question is, well, was this legislation vitally altered? And you've lived through it, but as everyone has said here over and over again, in the span of 12 hours, the legislation went from being, providing wraparound services to something that established the modern ADC with a CEO model. So I think the position has been that it was vitally altered and therefore is unconstitutional. And I think the public policy behind the constitutional requirement is, and this comes from another court case, it's to ensure that hasty action and to lessen the danger of ill-advised amendments at the last minute. So when we think about what the purpose is, we want to make sure that we have well-thought-out legislation that's not hastily amended at the last minute. And again, the amount of change that occurred and that the bill was passed in those 12 hours, I think, is where the issue's at. And again, so that is the case, that's the Youngstown case. In support of Youngstown, East Cleveland City School District Board of Education filed a brief in support, as did the Ohio School Boards Association, as did the Canton City School District Board of Education, the Ohio Education Association, the East Cleveland Education Association, the Lorraine Education Association. So there's a lot of support, I think, to try to explain to the court where those issues are. But again, it's in front of the Supreme Court, and as you communicated, that is the last stop. And unfortunately, again, litigation takes time, and so that process is still ongoing. There is no deadline for the Supreme Court to issue a decision on that. So just so everyone's clear, although it's at the final stage, there is still time in that process. Separate from that, East Cleveland also filed its own litigation. One of the issues it raised in the litigation is the same issue that Youngstown raised. So we are deferring to the court on that issue. The other part is whether or not East Cleveland actually received the letter grade that it is reported that it did receive. And again, because it's litigation, we can't really go into the details of where we are, but that process is still ongoing. But we are in the middle of that litigation as well. So unfortunately, we can't talk much about it, just because of where things stand currently in the East Cleveland litigation itself. But again, we're very supportive of Youngstown. I can tell that the board is as well, and that's why it took the effort to file their brief in support of the Youngstown board.
All right, we're going to take some questions from the floor.
For full disclosure, Lorraine has Mallory Santiago here, who's actually our law director, from our law director's office, and she's our representation.
Hold on, first question here, then number two, then you can be number three. Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. DeSantis. One question stepping outside of your particular, their particular case. Is there a chance, excuse me, is there a chance that we could, as legislators, we could, as citizens, we could, as board members and so forth, collectively submit a request to the governor for an injunction on hiring or contract signing from here on forward until this is, we resolve this in the legislature? Who would do that? Because that would save a lot of money down the road. Because I think there's a scorched earth policy coming.
So I think you did the great thing, which was to try to put a lawyer on the spot to answer a question. You know, that would be something that we would have to look, I cannot tell you off the top of my head. But I will say that, as we can see, at least in East Cleveland, the process has been really frustrating. And unfortunately for East Cleveland, one of the things that we learned with the way the report card is structured, is that East Cleveland was already essentially in, falling into ADC control in the second year. So by the time I'd found out that it was two years in, it was already actually in. The report card has a number of measures that are lagged by a year. So when we're looking at the performance data for East Cleveland, although a number of the areas improved, it was too late for East Cleveland. Again, that's separate from the litigation, but it's this, it was a frustrating thing to learn that, you know, all these changes were being made, but when East Cleveland found out it had two of the three years that were necessary, that second year was actually the third year for a number of the measures on the report card. So I think that was one of the really frustrating things for the board.
Mike, I'm a simple guy. I think in simple terms here, is, would it not simply be the straightest course to resolving at least some of the direct impact, to simply repeal HB 70? I mean, I know we talk about all the details around it, we talk about funding issues, we talk about the CEOs that are hired, we talk about all these things. If we simply cut the legs out from under it, repealed HB 70, just straight up, you know, I'm saying to the legislators, just repeal it straight up. I turn then to the districts that, the board members, as I am a board member, you could take back control of your districts. You could straighten out the, how things are funded and who is hired. And I would think that we could get back, maybe not to a perfect path, but we could certainly address a lot of these issues by just a straight repeal of HB 70.
Response to that?
To repeal it, we'd love for that to happen, but we have to get some power to do that and get some bills and things written. That's why I'm hoping that maybe 154 will go through, and I think that would take care of it. But yeah, I mean, that's what we want. I think that's what all of the districts want, right? Without question. Yeah.
As a legislator, have seen this process for a long, long time, that is the question that we grapple with. Yes, we would like to see the repeal, but what do we replace it with? So that's kind of where we're at. And, and, I understand, but I'm repeating the conversations that I've had with a number of legislators, and that's what they say. What are we, we need to replace it with something that's going to work. So, you know, I don't know if you want to add on to Nathan, you know, I'm just being honest in the conversations that are being had and the thought processed.
I got the mic. So we're going to go here, then Mrs. Adair, and then, then Dr. Rice. And what time is it? All right.
Attorney DeSantis, I was just curious, so the only issue for the Supreme Court right now was the three-reading? Is that it? Is that the?
Three-reading, local control, voters' rights.
So again, the Supreme Court has discretion, what arguments they accept. So I guess the first thing they say is that the Supreme Court did not have to hear the appeal, so that their hearing is a great thing. On appeal, I believe, are, there are two different constitutional issues, and I think the three-reading rule is at least the rule that we briefed on. So I don't want to speak on behalf of anyone else here, but the three-reading rule is what we were focusing on.
And what would, what would be the consequence if they agreed with it? Does it just go back to hearing then?
If, if.
If the three-reading rule is violated?
If the three-reading rule is violated, then House Bill 70 would be unconstitutional.
But where does that put it back to? Does it put it back to the floor then?
No, there is just no legislation at that point. The House Bill 70 is not House Bill 70, it's unconstitutional. The whole bill, yeah, the whole bill goes away.
Okay, you don't get it, unless you got the mic, don't be talking.
My turn. Okay. Thank you. I've got a few comments. I will ask, well, there was a comment about injunction. The first suit that the city's district of, school district of Youngstown filed was for an injunction. And the judge in Columbus ruled against us. And so we appealed that, I believe, and they ruled against us. So the injunction issue, whoever brought that up, that has been addressed.
The governor, there's a difference between a legal injunction and the governor saying, stating to his CEOs, cease and desist all contracts from here on forward. So it's really, I'm looking for the governor to get with the superintendent and say, this is the directive of our education target, and cease and desist all contracts, because that's going to need to happen.
I agree with that. Well, okay, that's different. But then also, just a few other comments, if I may. And I've asked this before, we all know that the report card, since our kids started taking those state tests, how many times has that doggone thing changed? So when you first think, you know, you finally get a grip, okay, this is how we, you know, how we need to teach our young people, then the next thing you know, the state changes the test. And so then you have to start over. So, you know, for those of us that know about statistics, you have, you can't, you know, the results are not valid. The results can't be valid if you keep changing the parameters. So I don't know if anybody's spoken about that. And then, I don't know if you folks know this, but in terms of what ODE has done, in terms of trying to close the achievement gap on the state test, what they've done, and I heard somebody say something about race or racism, what they've done, what they've codified is that African Americans, other minorities, only have to reach 63-point-something percent on that test, but the, but white students have to reach 86. So they've lowered the standard for, to close that gap for African Americans and other minorities on that test, and raised it for the majority student. And then there was a question about, a comment about, okay, if you do away with HB 70, what else you got? Okay? So what we should have had was support from the state and the State Board of Education. They have not been doing their job. As a matter of fact, I had to call Office of Exceptional Children about our special ed situation, three years ago. They came in and found all kinds of problems. Why did I have to call? That's your call. That's what you're supposed to know. So that's what needs to happen. ODE and the State Board need to do their job. They need to do what they've been elected to do and hired to do. Thank you.
I got to call Dr. Rice, and we're getting ready to close. I know y'all are going to be really mad. I got to, I got to close, so I'm going to ask Dr. Rice to make her point. I gotta, I gotta close, so I'm going to ask Dr. Rice to make her point, and then, she'll be fast. And then Dan had a comment that I wanted to have clarification on, and I know you want to talk, Madam President, and I know Mr. Demakia wants to talk, and I know Ms. Johnson wants to talk. Fortunately, you guys don't work for me, so I don't have to see you on Monday. So I, I can cut you off, and I don't have to worry about it.
My comments will be very brief. Firstly, someone mentioned, why in the world would the state superintendent put someone present at the ADC who does not live in that area? That answer was, to me, is, is an easy one. He puts someone on there who would follow his directions totally 100% because that was our problem in East Cleveland. That's number one. Second thing I wanted to say is this, you know, it's, we really have to take a look at the report card, we really have to take a look at a different way of assessing where we want our children to be and what we want them to be able to do. That is one thing that we need, all of us need to be standing up on our feet and, and crying that outcry all over the place. Lastly, East Cleveland has six schools and one academy. Only one school failed, but we're marked as a failing district. There's something wrong with that picture.
Dan, are you ready?
Yeah. Just back to the question of what happens to the bill. So if a piece of legislation is declared unconstitutional, it's the whole bill, especially on a process, this is a process issue. So we've had that happen in the past where, you know, you get a bill that's declared unconstitutional because of a small piece of it, everything goes away. So be prepared if that happens, you know, we're at ground zero again. So that was all.
Mr. Demakia?
Yeah, real quick, Jeff, I'm a simpleton as well, but I'm also a realist. And let me preface this comment with saying that I do support House Bill 154 as well as Senate Bill 110, but the realism is, listen, legislation isn't just going to repeal this bill. It, it, it's just, that's going to be very difficult to happen. But Senator Fetter, what, what should we do next? How about change the funding model for education? How about resources for eliminating the barriers that our poverty-inflicted students are faced with every single day before they come to our classroom? You know, i.e. wraparound services. Why don't we do what the bill was initially supposed to do and start implementing those wraparound services? And most importantly, get rid of the state standardized tests and stop making money off of it, and let's get back to educating kids. You know, real quick, I mean, it's, it's simple, it's a simple solution, it really is. So take the politics out of it, and let's get back to educating kids.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
I'm not going to waste any time because he said exactly what I was going to say.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Johnson?
I have one question. Our CEO, his contract is up June 11th. Now, how, if his contract is...
He's going to have two years?
Yes, ma'am.
At that time? And we're doing all the legislative things, and it's going through and going through. He's still in.
Through June 11th, for sure.
So then, then what do, what do we do? Because he's still there.
Anybody want to respond to that? Okay, this is going to be the last, this is going to be the last comment, then we're going to get ready for our survey. Representative?
Thanks. Once again, Nathan Manning, State Senate 13th District. You know, I don't know the exact answer to that. My understanding would be, hey, the state is, is responsible for the payment of the CEO, so they might be on the hook for, for the contract, but obviously you can always make changes. And in regards, I mean, there's like, you know, three different plans out there to oversimplify it. One's just the repeal, one's the repeal and replace. My bill's more of a safety net, or maybe a bridge year for a exit plan for the school districts that are currently in it. Because, you know, we, we heard a lot of talk about how there's 30 or 40 new people hired at $100,000 a year. If we completely just repeal this, are we going to be stuck on those contracts? Or under, under some of the things on House Bill 70, can we get out of those contracts? So, you know, that's what we're looking at right now in the legislature, is the smartest way to go about this, the exit strategy for the schools that are currently taken over. I think it's easy for the schools that aren't taken over, for the three school districts that are, that's what we're trying to make sure we do it right, so.
I'm okay with firing them all.
Let's give a round of applause.
One thing.
Yes, ma'am.
I just, I just want to answer his question. All of our contracts are supposed to be Edwill contracts, so they, they should be able to be broken very easily. Should be.
Okay, all right, this is, this is the last one now. I keep telling you.
I can answer that. In, in the first draft, before we worked a lot more of the IPs, interested parties together, we contacted LSC, my office did, and I, and legal, excuse me, LSC, but legal in that process, and I said, if we, if we create a bill that gets signed and takes effect, can we cancel the contracts of any contracts that were signed under the CEO? And the answer was, if those contracts were signed before the bill was signed, those contracts cannot, by Ohio law, they cannot be broken. So do you kind of see where that injunction from the governor, please stop signing contracts, needs to happen right now? This is, this is the piece that Superintendent Graham and I went back and forth on, and we kept trying to figure this out, and legal had, had given me an opinion on this. Maybe that could be a wrong opinion, but I'm, I'm liking to believe that they were pretty accurate with that, because they, they understand that contract law.
In other words, we, we are keeping him.
Yes. Well, yes, we'll be, the ODE will be paying the CEO, but all those other administrators and chiefs, and whatever they want to call them, are going to cost the district, and that was the goal. And that's the scorched earth policy that I was discussing with some others that were concerned about, signing all these contracts to their friends, knowing their friends can take that money and run afterwards, because you're not going to keep them. You're not going to keep these inexperienced chiefs on staff. I mean, I, although I have done bus duty and lunchroom duty, and I, I know a great place where they could work, if you have to keep them on contract. Yeah, and I'm going to give this back to Dr. Tucker.
Our school board member from Canton.
Thank you, Dr. Sanders. I, I, I do have a question. I want to make a comment first. My comment is, is I want to thank all of you for your persistence in this fight. You know, we're Canton City Schools, we're in the next wave. We are very proud to be joined to the Youngstown suit. And by the way, when you're ready for amicus briefs in East Cleveland, we'll do that too, because we are committed.
Thank you. Thank you.
And, you know, you all in the legislature, from time to time, do things that are questionable with, with regard to constitutionality. If there's a mechanism in this at all to turn back the clock, so that these districts aren't saddled with this horrific stuff that these academic distress commissions and, you know, bad joke of CEOs are doing, you guys need to do it. And the other thing that I want to say is, I don't see any reason why. I know there's politics, and I get that, but everybody agrees that this was a mistake. Everybody knows this was bad. Just repeal it clean. Get rid of it. You know, anything else is either vindictive or arguing a bad point, and it just doesn't make sense. Just get rid of it, turn the clock back, and let us get on with business. Thank you.
Let's give our panel a nice round of applause. Thank you very much. Now, here's what I need you to do. I need everybody to sit still for four more minutes, and then we're going to go out and get our boxed lunch. We're going to have a working lunch, and my commitment is to turn this microphone back over to President Ballard at 12:28. He's got two minutes to wrap up, and by 12:30, we're going to be done. Now, part of the work, and during our lunch, I will have some reflections relative to what can be done to replace HB 70 from an accountability, student achievement point of view, because I do believe you just can't say, well, we're done, and we just, nothing happens. So I do think we need viable, local collaborative plans that don't have alignment to state oversight, and I'll, I'll speak about that a little bit later. Part of the work of the Ohio, the Midsize Ohio Group is to begin to collect some data and research on your perspectives about these matters. So often, we talk a lot, but we don't have a lot of data sometimes and research to back us up. So we're working with a colleague, Dr. Judy Jackson May, who is a tenured professor at the Bowling Green State University in Bowling Green, Ohio. And she has a short, eight-question survey. They're not extended response, you actually, it's Likert scale, you can respond, but we need you to do it before you eat, because if you eat, you probably not going to do it. All right, so I'm going to ask if we would pass those out right now, and if my team would assist in getting those out quickly. There are pins at your table. It'll take you about two minutes or less, yes, it'll take two minutes or less, you need to identify which role you're playing, you're a school board member, or a school administrator, or ADC member. So we need you to fill this out, then we're going to excuse you for a few minutes to grab your boxed lunch, and then our superintendents are all here, and they're going to be talking about instructional improvement and student achievement-related matters in terms of addressing these concerns.
I would just want to make a statement, Dr. Sanders, for those of you that have to research like I do, and he originally said he was going to do this at the end, perhaps it's been too long since you've been at Bowling Green State University, you don't do surveys at the end. But when he told me he was going to have you here, for those of you that do this, there is no opportunity ever for this issue to have all of you in this room, so just like the movie Carrie, vote the doors. Nobody leaves without filling out the survey. It's, it's just critical, and the, the questions are varied because we have no base for it. There, there is nothing. We cannot get everyone in a room, so please, and I just, I thank you, and I know this was quick, and there's actually nine questions, apparently I had trouble counting, but I, I really appreciate this, and there's just no place to go. I need to research this because this is what I do. I've been a teacher, certification teacher, principal, director of curriculum, now I'm a faculty, and I just want to say, 30 years ago, we moved to a community, and we asked, where's the best place for our daughter to go to school? And they told us Calidonia Elementary School, even in Ohio. She is a successful teacher to this day, so thank you so much.
All right, so let's take, you're more than welcome. Let's take a couple of minutes, and once you have, we making more copies? All right, we have, our crowd is bigger than we had anticipated, Mr. President, so we have some extra copies being made. Once you complete your survey, please fold it in half, and then one of our team members will come by and collect it. So if you don't have one, once you have your survey, then you can go get lunch. You can't get lunch with, can't get lunch without your survey being completed.
Will you give this?
Yes, ma'am. Right, this is your lunch ticket right here. You give this form to me, and you can go get lunch. Thank you, ma'am.
Every year, the Salvation Army serves nearly 30 million people in need. That's one person every second. So by the time you've finished watching this, 30 more lives will have been changed for All thanks to your donations.
Thank you.
Inspiring city and campus. Inspiring people. Inspiring creativity. Inspiring hands-on learning. Inspiring global experiences. Inspiring traditions. Be a Buckeye. Inspire.
I'm going to ask my three superintendent colleagues if they would please proceed to the table, to our panel discussion table. I will be introducing them in just a moment, and we're going to, I know people are getting their lunch, this is why Dr. May wanted to make sure the, the surveys were completed. Good call.
Room empty. I said, room empty.
Okay.
Still eating, Doc?
I'm sorry? Yeah, well, and we, this is a working, this is, this is a working lunch. We do the work, and they do the lunch. I think that's the way that, I think that's the way that works. While we're getting organized, I just want to thank the boards again. I want to thank all of the board members, and I want to specifically thank the Lorraine Board for hosting today. I think this turnout and session, President Ballard has exceeded our planning and expectation. And I, I think President Kimmel would agree.
Yes.
And I talked to the, our East Cleveland president a moment ago, and she's very pleased with the turnout, the dialogue, and the discussion. We really appreciate our state legislators. You know, sometimes the state legislators come and they, they do their five-minute deal, and then they have to go somewhere else. But we really appreciate them taking the time to stay with us, to dialogue with us, and we appreciate it very much. So this session today, at this point, if I could have everybody's attention, please, if I could have your attention. So our session here, we have three sitting superintendent of schools who represent diverse districts and diverse communities, and I have had the pleasure, I've had the pleasure of working with them and knowing them for many, many years. In fact, two of the three worked with me when I was in Cleveland, and they are of significant high caliber, and they could work for me anytime because of their outstanding leadership. So I'd like to introduce the three of them to you and talk a little bit conceptually about what this session is about, and how we're going to proceed for the rest of the, the rest of the, rest of the day. So with us on, to my left and my left on the podium, is our good friend from the Mansfield City School District. This is Mr. Brian Gaverick. Brian is, has spent the last, spent most of his career, actually, in the Mansfield, all of his career in the Mansfield City Schools. And I can certainly appreciate what it means to spend the bulk of your career in a, in a hometown or in an area that means a lot to you. Mr. Gaverick is superintendent of the Mansfield City Schools, and today he's going to be sharing with us a unique experience as it relates to the report card dynamic that our colleagues from East Cleveland experienced, and the dynamics that's associated with that. We also have a distinguished superintendent from Richmond Heights School District in Richmond Heights, Ohio. This is Dr. Renee Willis. Dr. Willis is doing a tremendous job there in Richmond Heights. I'll tell everybody, before my current senior team came, I tried to get Dr. Willis to work for me again, but she turned me down. She never turns me down, but she turned me down. I don't know what's that all about, but we'll work on that. Dr. Willis is an outstanding superintendent. When we were in Cleveland, serving 60, 65,000 students, Dr. Willis was in charge of all of our elementary schools in the district, 60, 70, 80 of them, I can't remember, 110, whatever.
81.
81. I knew you would remember. And we were part of the team that brought Cleveland out of many years of academic emergency in the first year to continue its improvement. And a lot of that work is attributed to both Dr. Willis and her outstanding contributions to the work. And also, when I was in Cleveland, I had the great pleasure of working with Mr. Donald Jolly, who was a principal of one of our major high schools and went on to take on central office positions. And like me, he had the oppo, he has the opportunity to work in his hometown in Warrensville, and the, both Brian and Donald were... And the, both Brian and Donald were in situations where they were on the A D C clock. And Mr. Jolly will talk today about the kind of academic and instructional work that occurred in their district, that they were able to avoid that designation. Dr. Willis' district is not in the A D C window, but her contributions to the Ohio Midsize and her academic experience has really helped a lot of districts and helped a lot of superintendents, and her expertise is warranted for our discussion this morning. And so I'll phrase the question, the general frame of this, this way. We heard a lot today about CEOs and budgets, and Senate bills, H B seventy, and things that we don't like. And everyone who has said things today are really on point. But the real tough, the elephant in the room is basically this. How do we improve student achievement in districts that have high poverty, that have wraparound service needs, that have families that are in either trauma or dysfunctionality, or in neighborhoods or communities that are challenged by infrastructure and other economic needs? The bottom line is, we have to improve student achievement. We can talk all day about what's wrong with legislation and other, and you, everyone's right, but at the end of the day, we have to talk about how do we improve student achievement? So our superintendent colleagues today are going to help us talk about that to some degree, and then obviously, we want to open it up for questions from our colleagues. So that's the framing of our conversation, and I know our school board members are gonna have a lot of questions. We encourage those questions. Then around twelve fifteen or so, I'm gonna take about eight minutes and wrap up everything from today, and then turn it back over to the president, to President Ballard. All right, so Brian, you wanna get us started today? Maybe you wanna, each folks take a minute or two, give us a little additional background of who you are, kind of work that you've been doing, and then make your comments, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Jean. I'm Brian Garverick, superintendent of Mansfield City Schools, born and raised there. I spent my first years out of college, nine and a half years, working for Empire Detroit Steel Division in Mansfield. It's right there along Route Thirty. We're most known for Mancy and the Shawshank Redemption. But moreover, I've grown up in that community, and I've been able to watch as our community has been transformed, okay? We've gone from a manufacturing economy base to a service economy base. We have high district, or excuse me, high poverty districts, just like everyone here. All the stories that I've heard today, it's Mansfield's story. All the problems that we're facing. And Jean posed the question, what are we doing about it? We have a different, a different issue that we've been dealing with, with regards to the A D C. Now, when I first took over as superintendent, I was handed the keys and told that I had to pass ten-point-one-mil levy, okay? We were in churches, breakfast meetings, on the street corner, and we passed them. And then I had to, I was informed by our treasurer that we were going to go into fiscal emergency, because the levy that didn't pass sent us into fiscal, or excuse me, deficit spending. So I had to close the building, lay off one-hundred-and-four teachers. That was my first eighteen months. Central office consisted of a treasurer, and a superintendent, and a number of secretaries. Thirty-three, at the time, we had about thirty-seven hundred kids, over six hundred staff, bus drivers, cooks, teachers, and secretaries, and so forth. So what fiscal emergency does to you is, the law is that you have to start cutting away from the classroom first. You'd have to look at your vendor contracts, you have to look at your ancillary supports, your food services, all those before you get to the classroom. What that caused was a huge gap in providing services for our kids. And I heard one of the board members up here talking about cutting social workers and things like that. And those are the supports that our kids need on a day-to-day basis in order to be able to begin to learn, those kinds of things. And the number one, the number one indicator in student achievement is that classroom, teacher, parent relationship. That's number one. And so having that, those gaps in services, really frustrated a lot of parents. We saw a big drain in the people leaving Mansfield also, because with all the funding cuts, lack of services, and things like that, we have, we're bordered by three districts, high-performing districts. So open enrollment, it's a no-brainer for some. A no-brainer for some. So when we came out of fiscal emergency, I was able to put together a central office, being careful politically, being careful not to overstaff, and being, being able to access people with a lot of talent. And I'm here to tell you, I have very, very talented people in my central office. Chief Academic Officer, took him out of the elementary building. I took our school improvement director out of the elementary building. I hired a human resource director, which was huge, that monumental piece for me, okay? So we added that, we, a state and federal director who goes after grants like no one I've ever seen. And so we get, get a lot of funding through her. And so, and we hired a treasurer, one of the most talented people I've ever seen with money. We have more money than we ever had in that district. And so, having said all that, we are poised to go into year two of the A D C, because during that fiscal emergency and lack of human resources to do the work, we didn't purchase technology, weren't allowed to. We were not permitted to buy materials for our children. Yeah, we were handicapped right off the bat, you know? And so now, we're putting things back in place with our C A O in place, school improvement director, working with our teachers out in the buildings, on teacher-based teams, looking at their data, putting plans, instructional methodologies and plans together, so that they can go back into the classroom. What we've just started to do about a year and a half, two years ago, with all the research is really training our teachers in trauma-informed care. Who talked about the fighting in school? The, the, yeah, okay? Same in Mansfield. These kids will fight at the drop of a hat. And parents, also. We wanna partner with them, okay? But they are there to protect their child, and they'll do, and basically say, whatever. But, so, since then, since we got our new treasurer, he's my third, by the way, in very short time, but he's very talented. We've taken the barrier away from breakfast and lunch, as many of you have. All of our schools have rooms with clothes in them, and we do laundry. We have after-school programs where we provide busing. We have study tables, we have special interest activities for kids after school. We got through a Twenty-First Century Grant. We have a full table or plate of sports and activities. You know, we used to be in the Buckeye Conference with Sandusky and Lorraine. Some of you older people can remember that. And so, we're looking at a comprehensive strategic plan, and we wanna implement that this summer. We wanna, we're working with a consultant, Epic Impact, Bobby Moore out of Patel for Kids, he was there first. But we're looking at realigning our grade bands. So Mansfield is no district as maybe some of, some of your districts. We're shrinking. You know, everyone's leaving, if you will. Forty percent of the kids in Mansfield do not attend the Mansfield City Schools. We have two brick-and-mortar, a Catholic school, and a, a, a online school sponsored by our local E S C. Okay? So that's the makeup of Mansfield. We're looking at aligning our resources in terms of our buildings and grounds and facilities, our teacher training around best practices, using the data, and also taking away any barrier that we have that will prohibit kids from coming to school ready to learn. Also, we've increased our family engagement evenings, also. Math literacy night, E L A night, art night, you know, arts and, and, so, those are some, that's the dynamics of Mansfield. The unique thing about our situation is, last year, and of course, you know that grade card's a year behind, right? Last year, we discovered, in combing the E M I S data, that there were eight kids put in E M I S incorrectly. They took the wrong and, of course, exam. And so that would've kept us out another year of the A D C. So when we contacted O D E, they agreed with us. But there's no mechanism in the law to reissue a report card. We got a watermark on our report card. So as far as our community, you know, the headline is Mansfield's an F again, okay? Not that it's D's any better, but I think, you know, most schools were struggling with that report card, you know? It went from six pages to thirty-three pages over time, that report card. So, you know, you can, you can imagine what, and my colleagues here are going to speak to that in terms of the needs around those kinds of, of human resources to keep an eye on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you all for being here. I would like to be brief, so that we can really hear from Donald Jolly in Warrensville. So Renee Willis, superintendent, Richmond Heights, this is my fifth year. And when I started in 2014, there was no report card overall grade, but if it had been, we would've had an F. So let me tell you quickly what Richmond Heights is. It is a first-ring suburb of Cleveland. So I represent the first ring, which was one of the groups, as well as the midsize. Little less than a thousand students, however, ninety percent African-American, seventy-two percent poverty. So we experience all of the societal ills that the urban, the large urban centers have through urban sprawl. So when I first arrived, priority one, a strategic plan comprised of all stakeholders. And we stayed true to that strategic plan, which will be up next year, even to the point of rebuilding our schools. That was a plan in 2015. We will be rebuilding our schools groundbreaking the day after Memorial Day. The next part of the strategic plan, creating or adopting an instructional framework. K-12 teachers must talk the same language in our district. We became an avid district. Some districts are I B., some districts are knowledge works. There are many frameworks, but there's got to be a common language. When we start talking about Cornell notes in the high school, our kids in elementary, they don't know them as Cornell notes, but they know them as two-column notes, even as early as kindergarten, three-column notes, third and fourth grade. So we're an avid school district, and many educators may know what the avid framework is. Along with that, targeted professional development. We are a high-minority district, high-poverty district, and high-mobility. We're twenty percent mobility. So that takes targeted professional development for your teachers. Teachers go to whatever school they go to, great schools, but they may not have, have the training in how do you teach students of high poverty, and what does that look like? Why don't they have their textbooks today? Why don't they have a pencil, but they have on Michael Jordan shoes? We've got to get past that. We've got to also understand there is something called cultural relevance in teaching. And the one thing that I will highlight is that the principals that I have are instructional leaders. They've got to get into the classroom so that they can help the teachers do what they need to do. They are not the disciplinarians. So if you don't have deans, you've got to have deans. They've got to take control of the, of the student, the cultures, and the other areas. And finally, addressing the non-academic barriers. So before we can teach algebra to the student, we've got to understand those non-academic barriers that they had to overcome, whether it's with eye care, hearing, hunger, dysfunctionality at home. And I think those were the things that House Bill Seventy originally had in it with its intent, with those wraparound services before it was hijacked. So I would love to see that become the focal point. So having said that, I am clear that when I arrived, we would have been on the course to academic distress if there had been an overall F. So we have stayed out of that area, but I have been very active with the midsize urbans, as well as the first ring, because our small district, it's my prayer and hope that we can be a model that can be taken to scale, because any given year is but for the grace of God that we aren't on that back against the wall in academic distress. Thank you.
Good afternoon. So honored to be here today. Our story in Warrensville, we, our district was on year two of the academic distress. I originally came to the district in 2015. The first year, that's when the tests shifted from the P A R T test to the O S T. That was the year transition, the tests went from a paper to computer, and that was my first year as the superintendent. We didn't do well the first year. We received an F the first year, which then activated House Bill Seventy. We didn't get notified that we were a part of House Bill Seventy until February of 2017, which was almost the end of year two. I say that to say, though, coming in, there was a real sense of urgency on my part because of growing up in the community and the status of the school district. I mean, if you look at any of the data, the school district had been suffering for an extended period of time. The P R rankings were near the bottom or close to the bottom for years. So there was an academic problem. I knew that coming in, that there was a sense of urgency that needed to be addressed. But it was no way I could do it by myself. So the community was very instrumental in developing a plan of action for me and, and my team to make a difference in the community. So when I came in, we had a transition team, which consisted of community stakeholders and unions and parents that helped write the initial strategic plan for me coming in. So this entry plan, which was called the Returning Excellence Plan, was a five-goal plan that had strategies that wasn't written by me, but it was written by the transition team. And this team, and we stuck to the goals, because the goals had the expertise of college presidents, business owners, teachers, that helped give me the pathway to make the necessary changes. When you are in a failing district, which ours was, you have a lot of negative people, you have a lot of negative perceptions, you have low expectations for students, you have employees who feel like they're above the system, that they can't be held accountable, and it's a very negative culture. And in order to change that culture, you got to have some cover from the community. And I'm a very advocate for community involvement, because the community send the kids to the schools, the community are, are very important, and they have insights. Even though I grew up there, knew the people, they have insights that we don't have as a school district. So when we formed our, our community, we came up with a mantra, one team, one vision, one goal. And that's what we live by in Warrensville, is one team, one vision, one goal. Our community members, our mayors, our council people, we all have a goal to make our school district the best. So that means there's hard decisions that have to be made, that means that the focus has to be on our children, that means that we have to do partnerships and so forth. So our whole focus has been on our children. And one thing I do want to identify is the data. One thing I found is that our data was wrong, because our E M I S person did not know how to verify reports. So the reports would come, and then they'll submit them, and they'll submit them, and their comeback is submitted, but they weren't accurate. So we had to address that system to make sure our data was accurate. We looked at our class sizes, which were large, and, and even our school situations, we had eighth graders at the high school, we had our fifth graders at the middle school. So we had to change our grade configurations, so that our teachers could work as teams and work together, so that they could do what's best for our students. So we changed some grade configurations in our building. We invested in literacy, major investment in literacy at the lower grades, a program called Foundations, which is basically phonetics, the way most of us grew up. And our kids are learning how to read. So a lot of our scores, you won't see them till later, but they're coming because the kids fundamentally know how to read. We made investments in math curriculum, so that our curriculum aligns to what's being tested, because that's very important. And one of the most important things that we made initial investments in is in technology. So now kids took... So now kids took tests on paper, now they're taking them on the computer. But in a classroom, they're getting paper tests and then you give them a test in March or April on a computer and they don't have a clue on how to, to take the test. They failed the test. It's not a, it, it, it's not, it doesn't become a knowledge test, it becomes a, a computer literacy test. So our district and our board, we have a board member, Michelle Elbe here, I'd like to acknowledge, made some serious investments in technology. So we have one to one throughout our district. In our high school, each student has their own computer in our high school and in our other schools, there's carts for each class. But just having a computer doesn't really help unless the instruction is aligned to the computer. So we made an investment in a program called Illuminate, which is a data process, a data depot warehouse where test questions and different things are in. So our kids and our teachers are creating tests that mirror what's being assessed. So they're not just taking the first test on the OST, but they're taking them throughout the year. And then from that, we use that data to drive our intervention. So now when we see kids who not reading or we see kids who are, who don't know their math facts is, is good as, as well, then we have immediate intervention. And I could go on and on about some of the investments, but the, the major investments has been in technology, has been in literacy, has been in people, because we need someone to manage the data. And our, our board invested in a data and assessment coordinator. And this person's job is solely to monitor the data of our bi-weekly assessments, our benchmark assessments, our OST assessments, our teacher assessments. And from those assessments, we are able to make very strategic decisions that go back to one team, one vision, one goal, what's best for our students. And I, I believe it's the way we were able to avoid House Bill 70. It was community involvement, but it was a serious investment in our students and looking at what their weaknesses were and providing them the resources that they need to be successful.
Thank you very much. We're going to open it up for questions from the audience and I'll start with the first one. One of the common denominators in your, your commentary was creating a sense of urgency within the district so people understood, understand and understood what's at stake. Can you talk a little bit about specific strategies that you've used to address a sense of urgency so people understand exactly what has to occur and what needs to be improved?
So I think in my situation, it's inspecting what you expect, not sitting in the office, but being present in the schools on a daily basis. Really having expectations. Each teacher has goals that they have to achieve. Each principal has goals that they have to achieve and really hold people accountable to it. So that means our quarterly data meetings with our principals, our principals then in our TBTs are discussing the data. But I think being the role model of the urgency because again, you don't want to be part of, I, I didn't want to be part of something that went that road. So being present, being with, being with the people modeling and being on the ground, I think in our situation caused some urgency in some places. But again, you, you have people who have seen nine different superintendents who believe and have outlived all the superintendents that's been there. So they, they, they do try to wait you out, but again, you just have to stay the course.
Any other thoughts on that from Dr. Willis or Mr. Caver?
So for me, because I was in a, or in a suburban, urban suburban district, there was this belief that that's not us. And while we can look at Youngstown or look at East, well, at that point, it wasn't East Cleveland or Lorraine, but looking at Youngstown, my staff would say that, that's not us. So for me, it was a matter of showing them the data points. And we were more like them than they knew. So when you look at performance index numbers, when you looked at percentages of indicators or numbers of indicators passed, they had a rude awakening and it was eye opening and thus the sense of urgency came and we got to work.
Mansfield's made a significant investment in technology as, as the other superintendents. Also, a lot of investment in, in the professional development of our staff. When we were in fiscal emergency, we laid off all of our young teachers and it's slow coming back. So, you know, we have an older staff, me included, that we had to, you know, bring up to the current, current standards. And coaching our teachers, that's why we have that school improvement director to work with grade band teachers at the same level. And I just took a note from Doc Jolly there about the EMIS analyst there. That's going to be huge. That is a huge, huge piece in today's education.
How did you interact with the parents?
So parental involvement and parental support. I learned a long time ago, two different things. Parental involvement, you want parents at the schools, you want them at the activities, you want them engaged, you want them as thought partners. Parental support is that stand and deliver. That's when I'm putting out a call to action. Here's what it is. Here's what I need you to do. I need you to become advocates. I need you to understand the laws as I, I'm the one that understands and I give them the information. I need you writing letters. I need you calling senators. I need you calling representatives. And because of the, the trust, the situational trust, relational trust, they did it. Now that's the support. Now the involvement, I'm still struggling with. You know, our PTAs, our, you know, parent nights, it's like any other urban district, but the support piece, you can't beat it. So that was what I've learned to appreciate because our parents are, they're busy, they're struggling, they're doing other things and they're not coming to meetings for the sake of coming to meetings. So when they realize that I'm not, and my teachers and staff, they aren't pulling them for that, but when they do, and it's a matter of text messages, class dojo, whatever, stand and deliver, we're here. I, I've sent home flyers saying mandatory parent meeting regarding the levy. I have 400 parents in that because they know that I don't put those calls out. It's not going to be a mandatory meeting for the PTA fundraiser. And they were standing room only. So that's the one thing that I've learned.
I would say that it's a struggle for, for our district is getting parents totally involved. I agree with Dr. Willis that our parents are very busy. They're younger. We have a lot of younger parents who have multiple interests. So we're trying to figure out the best way to connect. Support, we just recently passed a bond issue, $68 million bond issue at 76%. So I think the support is there from the parents and the community, but the engagement is something that I would say we have to continue to work at.
Yes. My question is from a board's perspective. Mr. Jolly, Dr. Willis, she spoke about team, team, transformational teams and working together to develop strategic goals and a strategic plan. How did you work with your board?
So initially, it was two board members on our Return to Excellence Plan, which was the community people. Their second plan, our entire board was part of the process of developing our second plan. So we did hire a consultant and the entire board was part of the process.
So for my situation, and I would be remiss if I didn't share that I had followed a horrific situation. We had a superintendent that actually went to prison. So at that point, my board was vulnerable and I think one of the things, when they hired me, I said, this is a governance team and I need a commitment from you that we are going to operate as a team and we will get the necessary training as a team. That started what has now become our, our, the way we operate is biannual retreats on governance. And with that, they have just been elevated to a totally different level around the governance of the district and that it's not about individual agendas. It's about the overall district and the greater good. So that is what I did. But again, the bar was low. You know, the superintendent went to prison. The expectation of me was stay out of the, out of jail and out of the paper. But it's, I mean, really, but we took it to another level. Took it to another level.
Thank you because that's a huge piece. When we talk about professional trust, superintendent and board, it is necessary and essential in order to move the district forward. As you all know, Trotwood was on that bubble too. And we were in a very compromising situation because our superintendent retired and we had to bring in an interim in all of this. What we found when you talked about the strategic planning, first thing we did, and you know, I called a two-day retreat away from the district so that we could get busy working, but it wasn't just us. We challenged the state to be a part of that planning. We had Dr. Richards there. We had other stakeholders there. We had our representatives there. We invited them all because it's about solution-based. It's not our problem, it's all of our problem. Our board adopted one team, one fight. And with that said, those, you know, 48 hours, nobody got any sleep because it was truly about alignment, putting systems and structures in place for positive student outcomes. It was all about the students. Those goals that were developed over that two-day plan led us to develop a strategic plan along with our superintendent. And again, every decision that we make in Trotwood, I don't care what it is, it has to answer to the goal. That takes out personality, politics and political agendas. All of that and people. And with that said, I'm glad to hear that it was a village approach with our board. Our charge is to trust, but verify. That's the accountability piece. So thank you.
Other questions?
I'd like to make just one comment.
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
I like what you said about the way. I like what you said about the way you taught the students and that you went from the paper to the computer. And that is an excellent goal because when the students are working with paper all the time and then they've, they all of a sudden are faced with the computer and they have to take the test with the computer, that's a different skill altogether. And they may have all that knowledge, but they may not be able to transfer it. So that, I think that was fantastic, what you did. That's excellent.
I have a question. When did you introduce technology in the classroom? At what grade level?
It's introducing in kindergarten, actually pre-K. Yeah, in pre-K. We start at that.
And so all of, and each student had their iPads or?
Yeah, we have.
Chromebooks?
In the, in the younger grades, we have cows in, in there. So they don't get to take them home, but in high school, they get to take them home.
Is there a question back here? Time to pass this back.
I, I wanted to make a comment. I feel in Lorraine, we're doing everything opposite. We're not inviting the community in. We have a community business partnership program. The last meeting was in February and the community, people that attended were upset that they, it was already in February and there were no plans on how they could help our students. They stopped the parent advisory council and is just now being restarted. Our first meeting is Monday. Anything that seems to have worked in the past is no longer. When the small group of parents that is very involved and willing to do whatever it takes to help any child, we were told to start a podcast. So we, we really need your help. Lorraine's students are struggling and there are parents that are concerned in wanting to help make a difference and the CEO is turning us away.
Yeah, just a point of clarification, the CEO is doing that.
Thank you, Tony.
Doc?
Go ahead.
I'd just like to say, before we came to this panel, the other two superintendents and myself, we met out in the, outside the door there and, you know, we, we just went over, because we haven't talked about this before we got here. And we each went down and talked about, you know, what, what we were going to share. And I must say, between Renee and Donald, and I didn't mention it, but even, we're doing a lot of the same things with technology, trying to get one-to-one through, you know, pre-K through 12. And we're doing that. The, the realigning our, our buildings and our grade bands so that teacher teams can work together just as they are. It's just taken us a little bit more time due to the fact that, you know, we're getting our feet under us with leadership and that's very important. And one of the biggest, biggest influences in the leadership among the directors in my, in my office is this Midsize Urban Leadership Collaborative that, that we joined. And I'll give kudos to Dr. Sandy Sanders who volunteered to be our president. Actually, no, but it has made a huge difference in, in the outlook of our directors as we go make our educational rounds in Sandusky and Warrensville. And I just wanted to say that. Thank you for your leadership.
Oh, we appreciate it. Thank you, Brian. So we're, we're at a point where we have about eight minutes left where I'm going to attempt to summarize our work today. I have a handout, Dr. Kay, Dr. Sturgill. My colleague just mentioned, Ryan just mentioned the Ohio, the Midsize Ohio Urban Leadership, Urban District Leadership Collaborative. I referenced it earlier in our program today. Some of you may not be familiar with it because it's, it's new. Some of our legislators are familiar because of some of the work that we've been invited to be a part of. But this association of about 20 districts, of which the three distinguished superintendents on our panel are a part of, we've been working together on addressing the academic areas that need improvement in the district. And one of our premises is that we can learn from each other much better than we can necessarily learn from someone else coming outside the district. One of our ADC members from Lorraine, I think, referenced it earlier very articulately was, it's real, it's a bit of a slap in the face when someone comes to your city from somewhere else who, who, who doesn't have the background, expertise or, or perspective and then proceeds to tell you how it ought to be done. It's, it's difficult for us to, to take. When I was in Cleveland, I refused to meet with the SST people. Right, Renee? When they came to town, I said, I don't want you in my office. I don't want you in my buildings. I don't want to have nothing to do with y'all. And the reason was, and let me tell you, I'm being honest, the reason was I didn't feel that they brought any level of expertise, experience or background to our district that would be helpful. Now I did meet them once a year because it had to do with some money. So they was like, you got to go to this meeting, got to do with some money, you got to go. And so one of the takeaways from our, one of my takeaways, I have five takeaways for us. The first one deals with the fact that we are stronger together when we work together as a group. School board members, superintendents, legislators, community leaders. One common denominator that has been consistent over my 39-year career has been the need for people to work together for the common good of the students and families in our community. When we do that, there is strength in numbers. In our organization, over the last year, we have been fortunate enough to be at the table with all the appropriate decision makers to have our voices heard. And the only reason our voices are being heard is that we have 20 districts that represent about 40,000 students all across this state and another couple hundred thousand of residents where we can come together and voice our concerns. And that has been and has to be one of the key takeaways that we want to have for our group going forward. So we're stronger by working together. The, the group that President Ballard has put together today is a reflection of that. I can't remember the last time on a Saturday morning, this many people have come together to stay for three and a half hours to talk about how we can make our schools better from a statewide perspective. That's a compliment to each of you and a compliment to the passion and dedication that each of you have to our work. Point number two, we need to have a plan, not just pre-ADC, but post-ADC. So I want to encourage you- So I want to encourage everybody in this room that we need to begin to formulate written perspectives and ideas about if the ADC was eliminated tomorrow, what's the first thing we would do? And we need to have a 30-day plan, a 60-day plan, a 90-day plan, so that when this thing does happen, we're in a position to be able to have significant change and reflect stability to our community. Mr. Demakia said it earlier, you know, can you really even recommend the district to your friends? You know, are we really at a point where we can strongly say, this is exactly where you ought to be? And when we get that opportunity, which I believe is coming, and it's, and we have to keep the emphasis on the three districts that are under the auspices of the ADC designation right now. Now, I'm of the opinion that when people saw Columbus was on that brink, people start to change their mind about things. Just my opinion, just my opinion. And so now we got to do something about it. So when Lorraine was in it, nobody didn't care that much. Can I get a witness? When East Cleveland jumped in it, it was, it's no big deal. Youngstown is in it, yeah, that's Youngstown. And so what I'm arguing is that let's get our plan together now. Let's talk about what does that first two or three months after the ADC decisions are made, after the senator's bill has been approved and we're positioned? What are we going to do? What are our plans? How can we proceed? Point number three is that we really need to continue to have tough conversations with our teams about how do we improve student achievement in high-poverty districts. One of the things I was glad to hear my colleagues talk about today is the kinds of things that they are involved in, because we all have these common denominators of issues that we face in our community. And my hometown, Sandusky, Ohio, is just like all the rest of the districts we've been talking about today. We've been fortunate to have great support from our community, strong senior team, and really dedicated faculty, and just, it's been an amazing ride in my hometown, and we're doing some amazing things, but it's happening because we're all working together. And then finally, I would say two more things. One is that we need to keep the focus on the children and the families. So often, we get sidetracked in all of the other jargon and all the other conversations, keeping the focus on children and families. And then finally, I would say that one of the things that's been beneficial to our district in the Ohio Midsize Group that we're a part of has been the instructional rounds. This is where, and when they came to Sandusky, I think we had 12, 14 superintendents and principals and teachers from all these other districts that came to my hometown. And they went in my buildings, our buildings, they went in our buildings, and they went in classrooms, and they gave us authentic feedback about what they saw and what they observed. In fact, I got a little upset in the, after, not upset, I wanted harsher critics, I wanted harsher feedback. Tell it to me straight. If Renee Willis tells me that our third graders aren't doing something, that means a lot to me, more than some guy from Columbus coming in saying, I looked at something. I'm not really trying to hear that. But if Brian comes in from Mansfield and says, look, man, I was at the high school and I observed this, let's, I'm going to take that to heart, I'm going to meet with my team about it, I'm going to do follow-up on it, because it's coming from our colleagues. And one of the recommendations I have for our state legislators in terms of what we ought to be recommending in place of HB 70, is we ought to be promoting collaborative organizations and groups that promote integrated approaches to school improvement, where we work together as a team, where I come to Lorraine, Lorraine comes to me. That's how improvement takes place, folks, by working together and being committed to the work itself. So I'd like to thank you for our session today. I am humbled and I appreciate the opportunity that the three presidents have afforded me to serve as your facilitator today. This can be the beginning of something dynamic for our schools across the state of Ohio. We are the change we've been waiting for, we're it. And by working together, by having integrated approaches, keeping the focus on our children, talking about transformation and change, and engaging our public, engaging our board, which is extremely important as well. Board members are critical to this process. I get the trust part, because that's what we all want to have. But it starts by hiring a good superintendent, who's solid, who knows what he or she is doing, and is a strong leader. And then when you get together with your board, you can make things happen. We make things happen in my community because I say so. And when I go out to my community, I tell them, this is what we're doing and why, and this is why you ought to be on board. And if not, I'm going to call your aunt, because I know her. I'm going to call your uncle and tell him, I went to school with your uncle, now you know you need to get on board. So I encourage that though, seriously, I encourage that because it really makes a difference in the classroom and in the community. Those three people sitting there could be in any district in this state, because they're dynamic. And I see some of y'all looking at them, I see y'all looking at them. I see you looking at them. You got to check with me first, okay? Thanks, everybody. I'm going to turn it back over to the president, President Ballard, thank you very much.
Y'all, please give Doc a hand. So we've come to a close, it's been a great day. And first of all, I want to say to Dr. Sanders, thank you so much for helping with this and really kind of helping me co-pilot and pilot this thing at times. Much appreciated, and to your staff that came over to help. I mean, they jumped right to it, I mean, I appreciate it. I think, yeah, we'll talk later on what we can do when we get control back. But I did want to talk to, introduce a friend of mine by the name of Brian Baker. I know we had the young lady that came up from Trotwood, but Brian comes all the way from Washington DC, and he, he's very powerful in the IBEW, and he sees this as the new Senate Bill 5. So he understands the whole union buster part of this thing. And from that aspect, he's been as helpful as anyone could be, and for that, Brian, I want to thank you. Stand up, please, Brian, so they can see. So our treasurer, now our treasurer's in a very tough spot, because he has to serve two masters. He works with the board still, and has to get us all the information that we request, and sometimes when we don't get it fast enough, we hit him pretty hard. Then he has to go and work with this CEO who's saying, don't share, don't talk, don't do, and he's done a great job jacking in those two positions, so thank you so much for that, Josh. And his trusted assistant, Eden, had to leave, but she's been working to put this thing together for us behind the scenes, so hopefully she can see it on television 20. But thank you, Eden, for all your help, and she made this happen for everybody, give her a hand. And some of the legislators have asked, we shared the information of the attendees here, so if you guys are all okay with that, we're going to pass it on to them so they can keep you all in contact with what's going on down there in Columbus. And us all contacting Columbus, and even senators and legislators that aren't ours, may be very helpful throughout this process. We're all on social media, we have at least 200 friends, tell all your friends to make the call. Just keep the pressure on. They really assumed that we would make a little bit of noise, and then as usual, we just kind of go away, but we've been putting the pedal to the metal pretty good. And for that, I'm going to talk about my board. So when I came on, I've been through Tony as a board chair, Tim as a board chair, back to Tony as a board chair, then to me, and I've only been here four years. But we have decided that whoever needs to be in that driver's seat at that time, we're going to make the change to try to get the change that we're looking for. So with that, I want to trust, thank my board for trusting me with this little idea that we had about bringing all these people together. Thank you guys so much for trusting my leadership. And with that, I think I've pretty much covered all the other boards that came to work with us. Thanks, I remember coming down to Youngstown to some little churches in the middle of the night, and it's like, okay, how do I get back out of here? But it was fun, and you had an engaged community very early on, very helpful. So for all the support, when we met down in Columbus and those places, guys, it's going to take that focused effort for us to change this thing, so I want to thank you all for that. Yes, ma'am.
And I like to say, as being the new one, that they have taken their time and really taken their time to educate me. Because when you're absolutely new and you knew nothing about being on the Board of Education, they have really educated me very softly, so that I would know what was going on, and I appreciate each and every one of them, because they all have a different point of view.
So Yvonne is our newest member, and some days she'd make me really, really nervous, but I think she's got it. But I think she's getting it. So with that, so with that, was there anything for any of my fellow board members before we close? Anybody? You guys all good? So with that, again, thank you all for coming, and we're going to go back for a formal motion to adjourn, please. Roll call?
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools TV20 WLCS.